Let's call this meeting to work.
No, I'll take yours.
And thank you all for attending this budget meeting of the county commission. And I will turn it over to Ms. Tender to get us started.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, thank you for taking the time to just run through our second pass of our budget. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our Budget Director, Jennifer Barnett, as she would lead us through the PowerPoint that we sent to you yesterday to take a look at and walk through our second pass.
Great.
Good afternoon Chairman and Commissioners, and I do believe that Lamar has stepped out to the copier to bring you back some copies, just in case anybody wants some in front of them as well. So, we are sharing with you today a second pass budget. A second pass is a version that includes any adjustments since our first pass and another step closer to our recommended budget. Today, we will cover a quick review of the remainder of the proposed budget calendar. We will review again the fiscal year 21 estimated revenue budget, as well as updated expenditure budgets, focusing on some items that were still under review or continue to be placeholders pending a final recommendation from the Board. We would like to review the list of items where we've asked for Commissioner guidance and finalize recommendations for those items. We heard from our education partners yesterday. We will review proposed amounts in support of education that are included in the second pass budget, along with remainder of second pass budget. The remaining three dates are for your regular Board meeting time that begins at 5:00 PM. June 2 is scheduled to be the county manager's recommended fiscal year 21 budget. We will deliver and make available to the public the budget message and recommended budget no later than June 1. June 16 is the scheduled public hearing on the recommended budget. And we are requesting a specially called meeting to be held on or before June 23 for fiscal year 21 budget adoption, as there is new statutory guidance that the public comment period needs to be open for 24 hours beyond the public hearing date before action is taken. Looking at through, is that accurate?
That's if, that's if one of the Commission is not going to be present. Pardon? Yeah, if there's a virtual meeting, if, if, for instance, Commissioner Whiteside just has a cold and can't come, that would be different. But if he's participating, even if he has a cold or is healthy remotely, then there's a new set of rules that would apply. And the virtual meeting of a public hearing would require an additional 24 hours after the public hearing was held for the public to send in written comment. So, you'd have to come back and have a separate vote. It could be two days, 25 hours, or one week.
So, that is something that we will want to consider as we establish the public hearing date and then the subsequent adoption date. So, if no additional questions, I would like to revisit establishing the adoption date with you at the end of this presentation. So, we'll begin with reviewing revenues. A reminder that the fiscal year 20 amended budget is comprised of 324.5 million in budgeted revenues, with an appropriation of 14.8 million of fund balance, for a total revenue budget of 339.3 million. Moving on to second pass. Second pass budgeted revenues is proposed at 323, 324.3 million, and an appropriated fund balance amount is not yet finalized, as we've not moved to a recommended or final For comparison to fiscal year 20 amended, we are budgeting 353,000, or .1% less than fiscal year 20 amended budget, and here's how. All areas are budgeted lower than fiscal year 20 amended, except for ad valorem and sales and services. Between these two revenues, we estimate 6.3 million of growth, which offsets our projected 6.6 lower revenues for the other categories. 5.9 million more in ad valorem, with the HCA and the natural growth for real and personal property. Sales and services had some areas of projected decline. However, overall, it is slightly up based on anticipated revenue from Medicaid cost settlement for public health. We are estimating that local option sales tax will be approximately 3.5 million below the fiscal year 20 amended budget, however essentially flat to our fiscal year 20 projection year end. Restricted intergovernmental is lower in comparison, as the fiscal year 20 budget includes 929,000 of 1 NC revenue that was paid back out to GE Aviation that would not be in your fiscal year 21 budget. Health and Human Services is expecting a net reduction in DSS revenues, as it relates to lower expenditure budget amounts that generate revenues, as well as lower estimates from state pass-through dollars for direct assistance allocations and foster care board rate reimbursement due to lower numbers of children in foster care. Some other areas in restricted intergovernmental have projected increases. Other taxes and licenses, permits and fees are lower based on projected trends. Grant funds in fiscal year 20 included 161,000 from NC State opioid response through VIA to the sheriff detention for medication assisted treatment, and 18,000 from Dogwood Trust for Owen Park Playground. These were one-time revenue or authorized for one year. Other grants continue to support medication assisted treatment and are part of the multi-year grant funds. Other revenue is 951,000, is 951,000 lower than fiscal year 20 amended, and we will review the detail around that next. Any questions before I move to the detail? Interfund transfer revenue grows as amendments are made throughout the fiscal year when there's interaction between other funds.
Jennifer, I do have one question.
Sir?
The, the ad valorem taxes number forecast a 3% growth, but we're still assuming a lower collection rate than-
That's correct.
-currently, right?
And I will-
So, we're just assuming that natural growth of the tax base will grow, if we assume the same collection rate, it would be even more than this, but we backed that off a little bit.
That is correct, and I will review ad valorem again in just a minute, and we can certainly talk through that as well.
Okay.
So, for other revenue, so, interfund transfer revenue, as I had stated, grows as amendments are made throughout the fiscal year. Fiscal year 20 adopted budget started at 7.1 million. In comparison, the fiscal year 20 amended budget includes a $1.3 million transfer back to the General Fund from the East Asheville Library Project. Now, I don't know if you remember that we brought before the Board and had a discussion that we would debt finance that project, 1.3 million had previously been applied to it from the General Fund. We returned that money back to the General Fund. So, that would have grown in that interfund transfer revenue budget. Fiscal year 20 adopted, did not, or the adopted, now the amended miscellaneous revenue in fiscal year 20 included 350,000 from economic development for the NC DOT INCA Commerce Park Road Project. That is not revenue that's budgeted for fiscal year 21. So, that would be the comparison for miscellaneous. Bond proceeds is the anticipated financing for fiscal year 21 recommended fleet purchases. We'll revisit ad valorem here. So, just a reminder that ad valorem makes up 65.4% of revenue for the General Fund. Outlined on this slide are the property valuations by property type, beginning with fiscal year 19, and 20 budgeted, and then the fiscal year 21 estimates. For each year, you can see the total valuation in the top table. The bottom table reflects the calculation that yields total revenue. Total valuation growth from fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 21 is 1.49 billion. Overall, which would include that HCA, is a total of 3.8% total growth. We are still recommending that we budget at a 99% collection rate for fiscal year 21.
So, let me ask you a question about the, the collection rate.
Uh huh.
Because, I mean, our collection rate's been fantastic for years. Why do you see it being at 99 versus the 99.7, you know, 99.8? I mean, it's just been, as long as I've been here, it's been high every year.
Sure. So, currently, I think as of the end of business yesterday, we were at 99.16.
Well, that helps.
So, the trend for the current year is such that we, we just now have crossed over the 99% collection rate. In conversation with the tax collector, Jennifer Pike, the conversation has been is that we reduced our abilities for forced collections, and that we have additionally heard from individuals who may have established payment plans-
Right.
-that they are no longer able to continue with payment plans. So, based on the current year's trend, and again, a reminder about our statutory requirement, that we cannot plan in the next budget year cycle for a collection rate greater than what we are experiencing in the current year.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that would be one. Chairman Newman, was there anything additional that you wanted to know around ad valorem?
Do you, do you ballpark know what the amount is for the additional HCA real estate that's coming on the tax rolls this year?
So, the net increase from 20's budget to 21's projected budget is approximately 2.3 million additional, as it relates to HCA business and real property.
Okay, thanks.
They have appealed their valuation and don't know how that would affect it. It shouldn't be too great of a change, but they have appealed the value.
Okay.
So, we've reviewed this information before, but just wanted to touch on it again today. Sales tax, we are still estimating a $3.5 million reduction to sales tax revenue in comparison to the fiscal year 20 budget. And again, this is flat to where we are projecting to end the current fiscal year.
Thanks for all of this. Could, could you just drill down a little bit on kind of how you're arriving at that projected reduction? Is that sort of based on what we've been seeing this quarter, or kind of modeling for?
Sure. So, as a reminder about the, we have a significant lag in terms of our ability to know what those final numbers are. So, our March numbers, we won't know until June 1. So, we experience a three-month lag. So, we are well into our next fiscal year before we know April, May, and June. So, yes, we have projected just a small decline for the March number at about 4%. And then for April, May, and June, we have projected a 35% decline that, you know, has been based on some of the information and research that our team has done related to the current local reliance on tourism. The, for the next fiscal year, we additionally worked to slowly increase the amount of sales tax. And I don't, I did not have those slides in today, but we previously had those trended slides, where we kind of gradually demonstrate an increase in that sales tax leading up to the month of January. And so, overall, for the entire year, we are estimating about a 10, a 10% reduction in comparison. Does that help?
Yeah, thanks, that's very helpful.
Sure.
10% in comparison to sort of a normal year, pre-COVID-19 environment?
So, this concludes the information related to revenues. So, before we move on to expenditures, are there any additional questions around revenues? So, when we started the budget planning cycle and received requests from departments, we started, having received all of those requests, with an expenditure budget of 360.9 million dollars. Obviously, this was pre-pandemic, and this was our departments, you know, really engaging around what kind of new opportunities or needs that they may have. We fast forward to the current period, with recognition that a tremendous amount of work, collaboration, and input from departments, committees, leadership, and the Board have occurred, and the second pass total expenditure amount is proposed at 335.7 million. Depicted here by function, as this is the categories in which we adopt the General Fund expenditure budget, the top three areas of spending are education at 27.3%, Human Services at 25.9%, and Public Safety at 20.2% of the total expenditure budget. Comparing the budgets for fiscal year 20 amended to fiscal year 21 second pass, the overall reduction in comparison is 1.1% less for an overall 3.7 million net reduction in expenditures. The areas of cultural and recreation, economic and physical development, human services, debt, and other financing sources and uses are decreased budgets from fiscal year 20. Debt reductions are a result of refundings and fewer projects scheduled for debt issuance next year. Economic development is based on scheduled economic incentive payments if companies reach their targets. There are dollars that had to be carried forward, about 1.4 million from the 19 budget to fiscal year 20 budget, based on the timing of incentive payments that are not in the fiscal year 21 amount in comparison. There was another 1 million in expenditures in fiscal year 20 for the INCA Commerce Park Access Road, again, that wouldn't be in fiscal year 21. So, that's the, the information on the variance there. Other financing sources and uses includes interfund transfer expense, so funds that are paid from the General Fund in support of programs that reside in a specialized fund. Net reductions in comparison are a result of a lower subsidy for mountain mobility transportation, based on the new contract rate, in addition to some CARES funding that can be utilized for that program. We are not authorizing pay-go capital projects at the current time, and have fewer budgeted Greenway payments in comparison to fiscal year 20. We will review the detail on expenditure drivers for education, as well as talk through increases for general government and public safety in the next slides. Is everybody good to move on? Following the presentation on Tuesday from Education Systems, the total requested increase across all systems, and this is focusing on their tier one, so their top, their top priority amounts, those increases translate to 2.8% over fiscal year 20. AB Tech was a 0% requested increase. Asheville City Schools requested is 7.8% over fiscal year 20, and Buncombe County Schools is a 2.2% growth request over fiscal year 20. The amount included in the second pass version of the budget is AB Tech, flat to their fiscal year 20 amended amount, which totals $7,075,600. Buncombe County Schools is in at 50% of their requested increase. The amount is $745,338, a 1.1% growth. For Asheville City Schools, the average daily membership shared estimate of Buncombe County's increase is $136,093, also a 1.1% increase. Total final allotments shift based on ADM provided by the schools and from the Department of Public Instruction.
So, just a question on the schools. Do we, will we know specifically where that goes, or will they just basically take that money and allot it where they think they have the greatest need? I'm thinking it's number two.
I would say yes. This Board really has not dug into and designated funding by function or purpose.
Okay.
So, I think, I think technically, we, I think technically, we can't-
Technically.
...direct how they do it. I mean, but obviously, there'll always be a discussion, but, but-
You have the option to designate by function, or as we've been doing in the past, is giving them a lump sum. But you would have to go in and give it in specific line items and function, that you have that option in the statutes.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I want to make sure I get this comment on the record. I just want to say, and that I'm, I'm hoping they continue the same thing. I, I want to thank the, the city schools for their commitment to the teacher assistance and, and their pay, and, and I hope they, I'm sure they'll continue doing that. And I just wanted to say, based on, on what they presented last time, I wanted to make sure that, if I didn't say it before, I said it again, so.
Great. Everybody else, are you good? To provide you with information, more information on public safety and general government, we would like to review expenditures by ledger account type. To reiterate, the overall expenditure budget is 1.1% decrease, so 3.7 million less than the fiscal year 20 amended budget. Program support, operating, debt service, and transfers are all lower in comparison. Program support and operating are lower based as a result of departments working to identify reductions related to expected reduced revenues. This is largely driven by travel and training reductions. Debt and transfers, we reviewed earlier. Capital outlay is the net increase for the purchase of recommended fleet. So, earlier, you may have seen that net increase in general government. While we are recommending fleet that are all public safety, our general services manages the fleet. Therefore, the budget is reflected in general services budget, which is general government function. So, know that those are fleet that are public safety, but the budget resides with general services. I'll go over a little more detail on the fleet when we revisit capital. Salary and benefit increases, as well as contingency amount, I will also detail over the next few slides. This is the detail for salary and benefits. Salary and benefits make up 44.4% of our total General Fund expenditure budget. A $2 million net increase for salary is the net of, including the April 1st 2020 cost of living, that becomes part of the fiscal year 21 budget, reducing an estimate for fiscal year 21 cost of living, accounting for personnel additions and adjustments. We'll also go, we'll go a little further into some salary areas momentarily. Health insurance reflects an increase of $300,000, and accounts for adding new positions, as this is the employer contribution share of health insurance costs. And we also realized a net reduction to retiree obligation for health insurance. So, we had some fall off of health insurance who may have become eligible for Medicare.
And that's very good from where we were, in the conversation we were having last year.
And so, we, we are definitely working-
The insurance.
-in the, in the health insurance fund to, again, try to make those efforts to realize cost savings as it relates, and can come back to you with some more detailed information at a later date into the fiscal year. And retirement is the net increase to the state required employer contribution, and is accounting for new personnel added. Similar to the school systems, you heard from them, that they received rate increases passed along from the state. The rate went from 8.95% to 10.19% for non-law employees, and from 9.7% to 10.9% for law enforcement employees. So, that is the significant driver for the state retirement net increase. Payroll taxes and 401K are accounting for a net change associated with salary, personnel changes, or additions. Our longevity obligation has decreased. And the remaining category includes a net increase for our per FTE, or our per position costs, for items such as workman's comp, unemployment, and general liability premiums and claims estimates. Any questions there?
What is the currently forecasted cost of living adjustment for the next year? I realize it's such a crazy economic environment, it's probably anybody's guess, but is there a placeholder number?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look back to our economist, who is a budget analyst.
Between minus .5 and plus .5.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rusty. All right. I'm gonna give you some summary information here.
That is correct.
That is correct. So, what we did for the estimate of removal was we took the amount that was the fiscal year 20 cost of living net increase, so 625,000. We made an assumption that if it were the same, and we removed that from the salary budget for fiscal year 21. Since that's an amount we've been able to cover with, with lapse salary, we then adjusted it down, reduced it off the salary budget.
Okay.
So, want to review with you personnel adjustments that are included in the second pass budget. It includes a total of 10 full-time and one part-time General Fund positions, one Grant Fund position, and five solid waste Enterprise Fund positions. So, a total of 17 across all funds. Solid waste positions are planned with a July 1, 2020 begin date. The time-limited grant-funded position would also begin July 1. The one part-time EMS medical director would begin July 1, due to the nature of what's required, and we'll talk through that in a minute. The 10 full-time General Fund positions are proposed to begin effective January 1 of 2021. So, a six-month delay on the remainder of those positions. In addition to new personnel requests, there are 36 reclassification requests that have been reviewed and recommended by HR as additional work towards aligning work duties and equitable classification and compensation. We discussed previously around the use of temporary employees. We are recommending 43 temporary employees to permanent positions. Also included is Sheriff and Detention Career Ladder Implementation Funding that would begin January 2021. The General Fund net impact is 1.6 million of an increase for these salary or personnel-related adjustments. And we'll dive further into the details around each of these for new personnel. Any questions before I move on? You heard from emergency services staff specifically around their EMT requests a few sessions ago. Included in the second pass are six full-time positions with an effective date of January 1, 2021. The total cost for these six positions is $385,596. EMS has a- EMS has an additional request to add three full-time telecommunicator positions for the 911 call center. You heard recently from Brooke Haslett around the work to identify the 911 call center as consolidated under state guidelines to maintain eligibility for state 911 funding. The consolidation of county functions for the call center until moving the sheriff dispatch and emergency operations center personnel under one organizational structure in fiscal year 2019. It remained that these personnel adhered to different work schedules, so 12 versus eight-hour shifts. By adding these positions, it enables them to all work eight-hour shifts, which is recommended as best practice. The total fiscal year 21 cost of three new telecommunicator positions that would begin January 2021 is $125,000. A part-time EMS medical director position for a total cost of $99,614 is also requested. Previously, Mission Hospital subsidized this service by allowing personnel to provide the medical oversight. No formalized relationship exists for the medical oversight of Buncombe County EMS. This oversight is required by North Carolina Administrative Code. This individual will provide the medical oversight for both EMS and all fire district ambulance services.
So I got a question on that. That's the first time that that's been presented to us, correct? And do we have additional information showing, I think, you know, when I read that, it says part-time, and then you see the word part-time, then you see 99,000 for part-time. I think if we have, it would be good to show, you know, this position and across the state, what this position pays, and so that we would have a little bit more information, I think, regarding that it could be, could be added later, or we could get some information now, depending on what y'all are prepared to do.
We can bring that comparison back to you by the next meeting.
Okay.
I do not believe we can put it off from that starting, because we do have to have a medical director if we are going to run an ambulance service.
Yeah, I understand.
But we can get you some details so you can have that comparison in place
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
By June 2nd recommended budget.
Okay.
Now, that physician, that physician is a physician, right? Okay, that's what I thought.
It must be a physician.
And, and the other thing, when we say total cost, that's
It's fully loaded, salary and benefits.
And is benefits 30%? Or, it's pretty high, isn't it?
It is pretty high. It's closer to 49, 50%.
Yeah, I thought it was like 50/50. Okay, so, all right, so that helps. Thanks.
Thank you. So if no additional questions for EMS, I'm gonna move on to public health. Public health is requesting one additional nurse, as they have seen increased volume for immunization clinic visits, and the Wise Woman program, who provides cardiovascular screening, prevention, and intervention for women. This position is anticipated to lower wait times and improve client services. A request for a grant funded position was submitted through the budget process from Justice Resource Support for Grant Coordination to assist in taking on the workload demand of the work of the Safety and Justice Challenge. And again, this would be a time limited and is fully funded by the grant. A reminder that solid waste is a revenue generating fund separate from the general fund. Solid waste has requested five full-time positions, primarily to meet the demands of increased volume and assist with growing materials management requirements. You can see the comparison of July to April last fiscal year in the green columns compared to the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, in the green trend line, that the overall monthly tonnage far exceeds the prior year tonnage. It is projected that revenues would be sufficient to cover the increased cost of these requested positions, and the total fiscal year 21 impact is $412,117. So before we move to capital, is there anything related to personnel that I can answer? So, just wanted to provide you with a reminder that second pass budget maintains 26 total fleet replacement vehicles. It's 24 sheriff, so replacement vehicles, and two EMS, so one truck and one replacement ambulance. The estimated cost for fleet in fiscal year 21 is $152,000, and that's as we are estimating only one-half of an annual payment for the debt financing on those. The remainder would be debt payments for no more than a total of 59 months. Additionally included are the projects of courthouse and jail repairs, and fleet services complex, and Leicester Crossing buildout. We heard from General Services on Tuesday of this week that they have worked to obtain a design estimate for the fleet services complex, and would like to bring this project forward on June 2 for consideration in advance of budget adoption. Due to the nature of the location and the size, so they're at max capacity in this facility, we are requesting this to be considered earlier than fiscal year 21 budget. There would be no additional impact for cost if you were to approve and establish the project earlier. For the Leicester Crossing buildout, a plan for space needs and/or design, once a plan for space needs or design has been established, we will bring back to you information on costs and request to repurpose debt savings from a prior issuance for this project. The total new debt for these projects, so for the general services projects, is 6.2 million. The estimated fiscal year 21 impact to the budget are the approximate debt issuance costs of $100,000. Any questions there?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the vehicles.
Yes.
How are we financing them?
Ooh.
Bank placement, sir? We would, we will put an RFP out and it'd be a bank placement? It would be
Oh, a bank, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Because I think if I remember, when I came on board, we were doing some of them through bond issues. That's why I asked that. Yeah, thanks.
If there's a larger bond issue that we are putting out at that time, it may be easier to do that and pay that off within 59 months, less than five years. But as Jennifer just mentioned, our plan in this budget year would be to just place that at 59 months with the bank placement, a smaller RFP target.
Yeah.
But if we do have a larger bank bond going out, then it's easier to roll all in together.
You roll it in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Remind me what specifically the vehicles being replaced are.
Are they all, I'm looking at John. John's been our analyst on it. My recollection is, is that all of those were patrol vehicles and
21 were patrol vehicles, two trucks for animal control, and one for school resource officer.
Okay. Did you hear that?
I did, thank you.
Okay, great.
I will say, because the press can't be here, they're commenting that if you're not talking on camera, the microphones will keep you so.
So I'll try to reiterate that.
21 patrol, two trucks for animal control, and one school resource officer.
Yes.
Car.
Great, thank you.
And for the emergency services, the two, one is an ambulance and one you said is a truck.
Yes, that is a replacement for
It's actually a vehicle.
So like when, when I got here, the previous director's vehicle was moved to the fire marshal's office so that we could retire a vehicle. So that vehicle then replaces the train officer's vehicle, because we deployed it out to the street, and so that's, that's what that vehicle does.
Any further questions? So these are our debt finance projects. Wanted to just review with you again any pay-as-you-go items that remain in the second pass of the budget. Currently in is a $134,000 commitment to the Black Mountain Greenway. It's a final of three payments, and a $200,000, $200,000 towards INCA Heritage Greenway construction, which contributes towards the county match to the TDA funding. Josh O'Connor is here today and will be prepared to provide you some additional information for the MPO and NC DOT at the end of our presentation. The second pass budget does not include funding towards the Woodford Greenway design. Four projects that were reviewed and recommended by our information technology governance team remain included. Two information technology tools that support additional cybersecurity, the GRC tool and the security rating tool totaling $34,500. Remaining also is the onboard replacement cameras on mountain mobility vehicles. A county match of $16,500 is needed. Federal funding covers about $150,000 of the remainder. And then just appraise software remained in, and we've determined it can be funded from the tax reappraisal fund.
So the, would you explain the NORCON DOT locally administered projects are suspended? Isn't that INCA thing, isn't that a part of a DOT and a TDA and a county has to match?
It is, and what I definitely want to do is defer to Josh O'Connor. He has about three slides at the end, if that's okay?
That's
And I'll let him give some of that deeper explanation.
Okay, thank you.
So those are county general fund capital, but wanted to just bring back before you the recommended solid waste capital projects. There are six projects totaling $930,000. And again, all of these purchases are anticipated to be able to be covered through revenues generated as a result of operations. Any detail on those? Are you good? We've covered those in detail before. Earlier in the expenditure comparison for budgetary contingency, there is $100,000 in the fiscal year 20 budget set aside as contingency. For fiscal year 21, we have included in second pass a total amount of 1 million in budgetary contingency. Potential uses are, for contingency, are for any unanticipated pandemic-related expenditures, and it establishes available funding to be able to continue work towards addressing salary disparities as HR continues to work through the pay and compensation plan. Any use of contingency requires notification to the board. So this brings us to one final review of items that we've previously requested guidance from you all on for prioritization and/or inclusion in the budget. For the first item, subsidize ADA complimentary paratransit. The RFP and selection of a contract provider for transportation services has concluded, and there is no recommended increase to the amount of the cost to City of Asheville for complimentary paratransit. You heard from Matt Cable on Tuesday that we anticipate cost reductions to be able to be shared with the city. The second pass budget includes $65,000 for elementary and intermediate playgrounds. For solar, our recommendation is that this item not be included in the fiscal year 21 budget, and that following the conclusion of consideration of responses to the solar RFP, that it be brought back as a separate item for review and consideration by the board, likely in July. So these are the three items. The first one, now we know there's, there's no, no new cost, in fact, savings there for the city. So the two that we would like to seek guidance from you on today are the elementary school playgrounds, and then is there agreement to have the solar as a separate item following budget adoption?
My suggestion on the solar RFP, you know, it's challenging to, I mean, any budget is kind of a planning document, right? We don't really know how things are going to happen until we get further out. On this RFP, we don't know what the numbers will be, because we haven't gotten the RFP back yet, on either the cost or the savings, right? We also don't know if there might be financing options that are presented, so there's no capital investment required. My suggestion would be, I'd be, I'd be fine with not including a dollar amount in the budget, but I do think this is an important initiative, and, you know, people in the community do read our budget. The budget kind of talks about what are you hoping to get done this year? So perhaps there's another way to simply reference the solar RFP in the budget, like perhaps in the manager's statement about, you know, there's an RFP underway, we're expecting results on this timeframe, both the costs and savings on utilities will be analyzed by the commission and a decision will be. So I think it should be acknowledged in some way in the budget. I don't particularly have a strong view about where that is, but I think not referencing it at all in the budget would maybe not send the right message. And the one other thing is, I do think, I do think it's important to note that there'll be savings. You know, on the slide here, we say there's $50,000 a year in annual debt service, which might be true, but if there might be $60,000 in utility savings. So let's don't forget to acknowledge the financial benefits in the budget as well.
And so, so what I'll say is that the recommended budget in brief, which will, it's the, the intro part is the county manager's budget message, so there's narrative there. But then the following pieces of that are the executive summary and some of the technical language around the actual budget for the funds. There is a section that references the capital, so, you know, if that's the board's desire, that that's information that we, you know, include and, and provide narrative around, we could certainly include that in there as it relates to capital.
I just, yeah, I mean, for me, it's just if someone calls me and says, you didn't even mention the solar in the budget, I'd like people to say, well, look, here's where it's talked about, but there's an RFP process, we have to see how that plays out. So I just, however we get to that is, would be my request.
I'd like to add a, or maybe pose a question on the playgrounds project, which seems great on its, on its face. Given that the recommended amount of funding for both school systems is below what they came forward on, with in terms of requests, might we get some input from them on if an additional $65,000 is going into schools? Is this the project that they would elevate? Or, given the circumstances we're all operating under, would, would that be allocated in a different way? For me, at least, that would be sort of helpful information to inform the final stage of decision-making around this.
So I can, Commissioner, I could probably shed a little bit of light on, on this ask. I have personally spoken to every principal at these schools, and this is, and we also, Chairman, you'll, you'll remember, we brought it up in the school capital fund, but in, you know, school capital's 100,000, and you can't do that. And this, if it ends up on a list, it, it ends up all the way down here on a priority list. So it's one of those things you, you, you never, you never ever get to. And the way they raise their money is through, through the PTO, and, and what, an aspect of this is that these that are receiving this funding, they have raised over half or over. So this is basically a match, is what we're doing. I, I strongly support it, the, I think, in light of, in light, particularly in our, in our, our intermediate schools have been left out in the playground planning, and so it's one of those things they have to go to their PTO to try to raise the money, and given the, given the financial condition of And so it's one of those things they have to go to their PTO to try to raise the money and given the, given the financial condition of parents and now and what they could be soon, I think it, I think it's a very, very wise investment. Probably if you picked the phone up and you went to the, the top of the school system and asked them, where does this rank? You know, what I've been told is number 27. And so in number 27 means you never get to number 27. So. But as far as the schools and the parents and the, you know, the principals, they, it's been a, a, a labor of love for at least a, you know, two, two or three years for a lot of these schools. So I wanted to comment on that. The other thing I want to comment on, on the chairman. I, I agree with, with the chairman on the, on the, on the solar. My question is this, on the $50,000 debt issuance, we're not going to have that because we don't have the RFP, so there's not going to be any, any money. But this is an ongoing discussion. It'll be a discussion, you know, next year. And, but it is, it is something that we have committed to its, you know, I think at some level. And to let the public know that we have not backed away from a commitment to looking at, you know, solar on the buildings and the savings and balancing all of that. It's probably not a bad idea. Don't really know how you do it. But again, it's not affecting any money in the budget, but, you know, we have certain, we have certain goals and we have certain things we want to try to achieve and certainly. And then maybe next year, you know, the technology is going to be less and the savings is going to be more. We don't, we don't really know. I'm, I'm hopeful that it'll be, it'll be both of those. So that's kind of my position on the prioritization. So I would love to see us do both of those.
So let me, let me clarify if I hope I'm understanding this correctly. On the playgrounds, these are really pet projects that are being pushed by the principals.
Absolutely not. No, I would, I would not use those terms at all. What these, here's what happens at the intermediate schools.
I, I understand how schools work, but it sounded like what you said was the principals were the ones who were reaching out, asking for the money, but yet maybe the central office wasn't, it wasn't on their top list.
What I said was is that I have contacted and spoke to the principals to see where this lands as far as their priority. And it is, if you ever get one on the phone, they're going to talk to you, you know.
Trust me, I'm married to one, so I understand.
All right. They're going, they're going, they're going to talk to you a long time about why the, the age group in the intermediate school, as it's being, moving from the elementary school. What they told me was that so many children end up on the basketball court, sitting on their backpacks, having discussions about, you know, how good or bad it is at home. And so by creating this, this space for them, it allows them to go out and get that energy out. And it's very important to them and it's very important to me. But, and I've heard from people in the community and, I mean, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing issue. It started at one school. And actually, the, the call came from a, which is really interesting. The first call that I got on this came from a city council woman. Had called me and there was a particular school that was concerned and they were, then it created this conversations that, well, we've left out the intermediate schools. You know, we go to high school and we build the, the fields and we invest, you know, millions of dollars in turf and, and they felt very strongly about it and I'm, I think it's a great thing to do and the money's not much at all.
I don't disagree, Commissioner Belcher. Where I'm landing on this though, is trying to wrap my head around it. In some ways, it feels like it's bypassed the budgeting process that goes through central office. And in some ways, it feels that if schools can get, individual schools can get directly to us, then they can advocate for their individual needs, yet again bypassing the central office and school board budgeting process and also the school improvement capital process. I mean, I think if every principal could call every one of us, they would want their track redone. There, you know, there's a myriad and laundry list of capital projects that clearly need addressed in our schools. And I think we, we need to look at how we move forward on addressing those without it, without the appearance of bypassing the processes that are in place. I, again, I don't doubt, I know how hard, in particular, elementary school PTOs and intermediate school PTOs work to fundraise. And it's, it's unfortunate that our schools are not funded in the way that they should be, so that the PTOs are not having to do that. It, the optics of how this looks to me isn't sitting quite right. I think it, we could be opening Pandora's box of individual schools reaching out saying, well, you know, Chairman Belcher, I've really got this need this year. You know, Commissioner Belcher, Chairman Newman, I, it, I don't know, it's just, it feels like they're not playing with, by the rules.
Well, I'll tell you very clearly that the school system, the principals, the parents, students, all that are involved in this are playing by the rules. As an elected official, I'm elected to be the ears of the community. And when the community contacts me or whether they contact Chairman Newman or whoever it might be, or yourself, and they express a need for their tax dollars, it is not a pet project for the principals.
It's listed as a commissioner priority, so.
Actually, actually, that's, that's worded differently. And Commissioner, I'm just, you know, if you want to spin this that way, that's fine. But if you want to vote against it, just vote against it. But if you do not agree that this is a need within the community, then don't vote for it.
You've heard me say, I don't think it's not a need. I think, again, it doesn't feel like it fits within the proper budgeting process. And in the grand scheme, maybe somebody could say, well, it's only $65,000, but we're also not fully allocating the requests that came forward to us from both school systems on Tuesday because of the budget situation that we're currently in. And this, this is questionable to me. So I haven't made my mind up either way. I'm trying to understand the situation a bit better and also understanding how this could be addressed in a different way. And also understanding where it falls within Superintendent Baldwin's list of priorities.
Well, I've talked to Superintendent Baldwin also and this, taxpayers sometimes are very clear what they would like to have their dollars invested in. And this came from them. It is my duty to respond to that. It's not going around anything. I'm on the school capital fund, you know, commission fund. Brought this up at the meeting that they had been left out of the building process of the intermediate schools.
Can I ask a question? How many schools are we talking about?
Six total. Yeah, it's six, six, it meets the needs at six total schools.
Are any in the city?
And I don't, are there any intermediate schools in the city?
No.
I don't have an answer for that.
I don't think there are.
It's not. You know, I'm.
Well, this is elementary and intermediate.
So the elementary, Johnson.
Two elementary schools that, that have a, an amount of the, of a playground that has not been completed.
Pisgah and.
The reason I asked, the reason I asked that, the eight years I spent on the city school board, and I don't think it changed. Playground equipment came from two sources, the PTOs and the school foundation. And they would usually partner on that and do it. That's why, yeah, this should change.
Well, there's not a foundation, you know, for this. I wish there was.
There's a Bonham County Schools Foundation.
But here's the thing we need to understand that there's one, this is a one-time cost. They have half the money and it is a match. And they, it's a need that, that I think should be met. And I don't think it's a unwise use of tax dollars at all.
So there are two elementary schools, it's Pisgah and Johnson Elementary, and then there's four intermediate schools.
Yeah, and.
Those that are six that will be here.
And, and you don't even want to get me talking about Johnston Elementary and their ability to, their PTO to raise money. Johnston Elementary is one, is one of the poorest, if not the poorest, school in the system. There are, there are no sidewalks leading to that school. My daughter was an assistant teacher there for 10 years. I know that school. I know these, these principals. This is not, this is, these are legitimate needs for these, for these schools. If they, I can't help it that they may not fall in the perfect mold of how the, the, the school system works. But I don't think it's fair to these children or their, these parents to not deal with this question. The fact is, is that elementary schools are provided for in the capital budget. High schools are provided at a, at a greater level and, and, and needful for sports and for activities and exterior activities. But the intermediate schools, those children are in the middle. And they, they, so their playground equipment is different than what you would see at an elementary school. And, but if you look at the intermediate schools, you will see a ball field and you will see a basketball court in their design. And if you go to the sixth and seventh graders, you go to the sixth graders and you go to the intermediate school, then what you're going to see is that they use the basketball court for, to play four-square is what they use it for. If you go to the intermediate schools, that's what you'll see. And you'll see them sitting on their coats in the corners. You'll, and you'll see some basketball, but you'll see them trying to make the most attempt that they can to be able to do this. So anyhow.
Thank you. I don't need any further explanation. I appreciate that.
I mean, I think the, and I, I mean, the playgrounds are great at schools. It'd be great to have other playgrounds throughout the county at different public facilities too. I, I, I think the process questions are very fair. I mean, there is, there's an, and, and the schools have been very clear. They're going to say, look, if you're not going to fully fund our requests, they're going to tell us, because they've already said it. It's, we prefer for those dollars to be allocated towards the other identified priorities. So that is their position.
And they told you that position?
I think that was expressed at the last budget meeting, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yep. If we were, and look, it's a hard budget year, right? So, so, I mean, if we were, if we were funding their full requests and we said, hey, you know, I know it's not in your budget, but we'd like to allocate some additional funds for this, it probably, it would, it would be an easier conversation to have than, you know, we're going to make you make some cuts to things you've identified as priorities, but we want you to do this, this other thing instead. So it's.
And I'm happy to have an offline conversation about understanding that process a little differently. I mean, this is, you know, I'm still learning, I think year two, you, you'll learn a lot. But, I mean, I've said it once, I'll say it again, you'll probably hear me say it again at least three more times. I mean, these are going to be really challenging decisions to make in challenging times. So I think we have to look at all aspects. And I appreciate the conversation and learning more.
And I think it's a fair, you know, I mean, the only thing I would say to add is, you know, there, I don't, I think there are, this would be a great thing to do. It's, but it's not necessarily just a one-time thing. I mean, this is, this, you know, in five years from now, 10 years from now, next year. I mean, I think it's a fair conversation about, to talk about what is the process for funding them. I agree with what Commissioner Whiteside said. There's, the processes is kind of have, had to have been privately fundraised basically in the past. And I don't know, I mean, I think it's a fair question. Is that, is that the, should there, should there be some more kind of clear public investment in this to supplement that over time? Because it is a great value to have good playgrounds for, for kids. I think, I think we've had a good discussion. I think we'll probably have some more as we go through this to think about this budget and maybe, maybe longer-term policies too around. How can we get something in, something in, in, from one of the different pots of funding to maybe help out with this over time? Because I think a little bit goes along, goes a long way. But any other comments on this point?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd sort of like to ask about the sixty, if, if we said earlier that we cannot advise where that money goes, if we were to vote for the $65,000, could, could we tell the school that it has to go to that? Even though, even though we would roll this up in there?
Absolutely.
Because here's, here's the thing is, I, I want to make sure our schools are, I'm, I'm more, I'm concerned about our children. I'm concerned the fact that they've missed the last nine weeks. I, I don't know what the fall's going to look like for, for those, those students. And I want to make sure that we try everything we can to make sure that our students have the positive learning experience that I had growing up in a Bonham County school. Having a playground, letting kids out and, and releasing some tension, that helps. And if you don't think it helps, and you, you know, it helps those teachers to be able to let those kids go out there and release some of that, that tension. But would this money be rolled up into that amount that we were talking about or would this be earmarked? Because, okay.
That's, that's a good question. What's the thinking on that?
So we're asking two things. One, do you fund it separately? It would be separate, would not be rolled up? So if the conversation is not to fund schools, then that money could be rolled and then we wouldn't, it would lose its identity and they would spend it on whatever need they have. So, so there's two conversations. One, leave it as is and it will be earmarked for these playgrounds, for these specific schools. But if you don't fund this and you want to roll that up, then it becomes part of the allocation to the schools.
And so the.
And in that case, you know, it might be sort of of the nature of, look, the board's allocated this additional funding. We think this is a great idea. It's kind of more of an ask, but it's, it is, it is, in that scenario, it is ultimately the school board's decision on how to allocate the funds. So it's sort of a request, but not a, a directive.
Unless we earmark it separate.
We can earmark it for that.
I just, okay.
Answer your question. She said that, that we can do that.
Ms. Chairman, I got one more thing about the, the solar panel. So if, I agree with putting something in the budget saying, because that is one of our strategic goals. But the question, the $50,000 for, if it were to come about, that's just to issue debt, correct? That's, that's not a debt payment. So we won't see a debt payment till.
Fiscal year 22.
Fiscal year 22 and that debt payment could be whatever.
Yes.
I know the preliminary numbers we had, it was, it was kind of high. I just want to make sure that.
That's the debt issuance number, not the debt service payment.
Okay, so that's not the debt service, okay. But, but putting that thing in that, that explanation doesn't bind us to, because if that RFP comes back, I'm hoping it comes back very favorable. Those preliminary numbers were, they were very scary, but, but we, we know. So I just want to make sure we have a chance to look at those and we're not binding ourselves to say, okay, we put that in there, so we got a budget for it. So.
I think that's right. It's just acknowledging there's an RFP process underway that will be evaluated and a decision will be made. That, that's right. And again, my, my only other point was let's don't forget to, when it does come back out, to look at the savings. Because even though I think the costs are likely to come in lower than the conservative estimates that were given to us, I think even in that scenario, the annual savings offset the annual debt payment. So even then it was, it wasn't, you know, it was kind of revenue neutral for the county. So, but yeah, no, we're not committed. We're just acknowledging a process is being carried out.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. Well, where are the money? I just don't want us to forget, they've already raised some 70 something thousand dollars, haven't they? So if it goes somewhere else, I don't know how they can transfer that over into the school fund or whatever. Because, you know, I'm not no expert on the school, but sometimes when money is given to the school, it could go anywhere in the state. I'm not local here, but something, let's just keep in mind about that. You know, one thing I've had concerns about from the start on this commissioner and community prior to is, you know, why do the commissioners as elected officials have the thought that, you know, here's my priority? And, you know, I wish someone else would speak more on the solar system than yourself, Brownie, because you're in that business. And we don't, you know, I just get it from the people outside is, you know, I, I wish that y'all would come up with some priorities. And I said, you know, my priority is taking care of the citizens of Bonham County is what mine is. It's not building a ball field or a racetrack or anything like that. It is listening to what the people are saying. This ball field is what we heard, Commissioner Belcher, myself.
Playground.
Or playground, that they need it. And we talk about mental health. Playground mentally and physically.
Absolutely.
Any way you want to look at it. We had that argument about the SRO officers. We didn't want to use the money for SOR, but that was what the grant money was for. Yes, we need the mental health in the schools, but $50,000, 120,000 something taxpayers, I believe, that's almost half a penny out of each person. I don't think nobody's going to complain. But that's where I stand. We have got to take care. We have got to take care of our kids. And that's education mentally, physically, everything. Because they are the future when we're not here.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, I'm happy to be an advocate for the solar stuff. I mean, we, it's, it's not any one commissioner's priority. I mean, this county, I mean, this board has adopted this as one of our strategic priorities. And, uh, so, I mean, it's, it's, that's, and we've got a strategic plan that says, says so. So, I mean, it's, um...
But you've got one commissioner referring to these as pet projects from a, uh, a principal. And my understanding is these just evolved as part of our discussion where we're relaying information, you know, to the county manager and to the budget process. And they end up on a slide because we've-
Well, this is a particular one in Dill, because I, I was not aware of how it came about until this particular discussion. I've long known that solar in particular has been a-
You, you've heard about this, Commissioner. You absolutely have heard about this at, at least three meetings.
Well, yes, I have, but I was unaware of where it developed from. The reason I asked questions, how did it come about? Because it felt like it had come, phone calls to you saying, this is what I need. I understand currently now.
Yeah. Yeah, it is my job as elected official to take input from the community and bring it forward.
It is all of our jobs to do that.
Okay.
And I'm well aware of it. I have all the information I needed at this point to do this. We're laboring the conversation.
No, I'm not.
Okay, all right. Is there more presentation, Jennifer, on the greenways or other items?
Yes, yes, there are a few more items that we need to finish.
Move on.
So before we come to the conclusion where we are able to discuss the budget adoption date, I was able to receive some information while we've been in the meeting today just around the prior collection rates. Um, so the question was asked from Commissioner Belcher around pre-recession or recession level. So dating back to fiscal year oh-eight, uh, the collection rate that was budgeted at that time was ninety-nine point one zero. If you, um, fast forward the dates that we were able to quickly pull fiscal year twelve through fiscal year fifteen, that collection rate was ninety-eight point two-five percent in the budget. Um, so that gives you context in relationship to where we currently stand with a ninety-nine percent collection rate. Just one other piece of information just wanted to offer as clarification around the placeholder amounts for, um, for the elementary and the, um, intermediate schools. So it is four intermediate schools with proposed amounts at fifteen thousand each. Inca, Coontz, Eblen, North Wendy Ridge. It's two elementary schools with placeholder amounts of twenty-five hundred per elementary, which was Pisgah and Johnston. So just for context, that's the information for the sixty-five thousand dollars.
And I was reminding the commissioner, that is currently in the budget. So unless you wanna remove it, we will need to decide on that. But it's currently funded in the budget.
Okay. All right, so that brings us back to, um, a discussion around the remainder of the budget calendar. So we have currently proposed that Tuesday, June the twenty-third, at your regular board meeting time of five P.M., um, that we would hear and request approval or hear budget adoption from you. Want to seek information from you on whether or whether or not you, that would work, um, for you as a board? Or is there another date, um, that we would need to look at? We would not advise going later.
Seems fine to me.
And that will be a regular five P.M. meeting, would that be?
I'll try not to have a cold. Wear my mask.
That sounds, that sounds fine.
Okay, great. So I'm going to, um, turn the remainder of the slide presentation over to Josh O'Connor, who can speak to a little more level of detail around, um, greenway funding.
Thanks for having me here today. And I just wanted to explain some changes in our operating context as it, um, relates to our greenway funding and grant funding of greenways. Late last week, um, as a developing story that we've been watching for quite some time, we found out through NCDOT that all of our locally administered projects, which are projects that are funded with the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organizations, Federal Highway Administration allocations, are suspended due to NCDOT's on cash balance situation. So typically, the way that that works is those projects, um, are passed through funds through NCDOT that we are then reimbursed for. Um, but because of the lack of funding and NCDOT's cash balance issues, a lot of which relate to lower driving, lower, uh, gas tax revenues at the moment, um, they're unable to reimburse us for those projects at this time. So they've suspended those indefinitely at this point. Um, ongoing work may continue, but the mass, the vast majority of the MPO's locally administered projects will be impacted. At the moment, that's all of our projects, and I'll go over that in a little bit more detail on the next slide. Uh, but all of our projects were kind of in-between phases where we were waiting for approvals and administrative, administratively through NCDOT, and we were unable to gain those before this happened. Uh, we don't have a timeline or a method of correction that's been introduced. There are many ways that that could happen, most of which are gonna require action by the General Assembly, uh, and that the projects may have to be re-prioritized as funding's released. So, um, since we don't have an idea of how that funding's gonna come back at this time or how big that bottleneck is gonna be, um, we may have to reprioritize projects as to which projects are most urgent within the MPO's allocations. Um, our local impacts, the Inca Heritage Trail, uh, is one of the projects where we have now delayed in the engineering and design phase. Uh, there was four point eight million dollars, uh, of a total twelve million dollar, um, budget for the Inca Recreation Destination. Four point eight million dollars was our allocation through FHWA's Surface Transportation Block Program. And we were using that, uh, to match tourism product development funds through the TDA. Uh, we have made the TDA aware of this. They understand that it's an ongoing situation. We'll continue to update them as we understand how these delays will play out. Uh, similarly, the Woodfin Greenway project has also been delayed in the engineering and design phase. This is a project that we've had before you, uh, quite a few times. We're still continuing to seek additional money through the MPO, um, toward that project, which we can have allocated at this time. We just don't have access, access to spend it. Um, the total amount of project money delayed at this point is six point five million dollars, um, of a total fourteen million dollar budget for the, the project all told. And then we have the Reams Creek Greenway Engineering and, and Design Delay. Uh, that's a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar project. Um, on our long-term funding impacts, um, FHWA's made tentative indication that they are not willing to extend projects. They are willing to look at it on a case-by-case basis. Um, but we are under a timeline as soon as we start expending those funds. Uh, we have ten years from the time we first expend funds under an NCDOT contract to get that project constructed. So this is something that we're trying to make FHWA, FHWA aware of, um, that we're seeing impacts because of the way that NCDOT is allocating those funds. Uh, we have no indication whether NCDOT is gonna get these fixed within months or if it's gonna be within the longer term. And what we anticipate is that infusion of stimulus funding or action by the General Assembly could allow the projects to move forward in a more short-term timeframe. Um, we're asking NCDOT to continue administrative approvals of our projects. So, um, what we're hoping is that once funding is reallocated and we can begin spending, we'll have all those contract approvals done, and we won't have any more delays than we need to. So with that, I can entertain any questions and try, try to provide any more clarity.
So when we say the, um, the DOT funds, in this case, those DOT funds is, NCDOT funds are really the Federal Highway Administration funds. It's federal funds brought down through DOT, correct?
That's correct.
Um, so we have ten years to spend the funds. So, you know, I know these projects are complicated and take a long time. That, that does seem like a long time. So even though there's this problem right now with DOT cash flow, because of a variety of reasons, um, how concerned are you about the potential inability to expend the funds for each of these projects in that timeframe?
Right now, we're not concerned, but I would say, um, that's something that we need to triage and reevaluate, um, particularly as, as we, depending on how long we see these allocation issues go on. Um, it is a relatively long timeframe, and all of these projects, we're in a comfortable spot within that timeframe. It, it just really depends on how long the project or the delays continue.
And is there on, on the, like, the Inca and the Woodfin project in particular, there are, you know, there's a variety of different funding sources for those projects. Is there, is there any potential to use some of the other funds to keep the design and engineering moving ahead and then potentially, uh, use the, the DOT funds that are now on hold for construction? Is there any ability to look at those kind of options? Or is it already kind of locked into the use it would have to be spent on?
Um, it's a federalized project, so it's never recommended that you do anything outside of that federalized funding stream and without, uh, an agreement in place. Because you do have to follow all of both FHWA and NCDOT's guidelines. Um, and a lot of that is the way that you track the project along its course. Um, I've not seen information that NCDOT would allow us to do that.
And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we don't plan to adhere to federal, you know, federal construction standards and basically assume that we're gonna work under all those federal guidelines. But just like, for example, on the Woodfin project, Woodfin has a lot of money allocated for this, right? I think there's some concern, I've heard from people in the community, that if the project is delayed too much, that their bond money might also be, uh, you know, there might be risks around other funding not being there indefinitely. So, like, on that project, could you use, could, could we use Woodfin funding for the design and engineering? Build it, do it all to federal standards so that we're compliant with, you know, being able to use federal funds? But then, since those funds aren't available now, are, are things like that potential options?
Not that we've seen yet. We are asking that, that be looked at. Um, it's not that we couldn't follow federal guidelines. It's that expenditure of funds outside of a written agreement would not be reimbursable under what we've been told at this time.
We'd have to have an agreement with the federal agencies and state to do something like that.
Correct, and that's what we've not been able to get to, to this point, is that signed document that allows us to move forward. And so traditionally, any funds that are expended outside of that agreement have not been reimbursable.
Um, on the, on the Woodfin project, I have, you know, and I'm not real close to the details of this, but I've just, I've heard concerns about delays on this project and potentially endangering the project. What are your, what are your thoughts on that at this time?
Um, most of the bond expenditures are spent outside of our greenway portion of the project. I know that that's something that the Woodfin Board of Aldermen, um, is actually actively managing and communicating with their citizens about. Um, they do have several components of that project out for bid and within construction timelines. Um, so from my conversations with the Aldermen and Mayor Behan, I don't understand that that's a concern for the town yet, um, but they are aware of those concerns.
So I've just got a, a couple of comments. Uh, first, I wanna thank Josh, you and your team, you know, for staying on this. I know you guys, uh, this means as much to, to you as it does to us. And, um, these projects mean a lot to these communities. Ongoing conversations as much as, as recent as, you know, just a couple of days ago with, uh, with a group of people on, on the Zoom meeting about, about, you know, these, um, these projects. And so I think we, we have to continue to be very positive in our advocacy and our relationships with, uh, the DOT and the state and federal level and do everything that we can, you know, as, uh, in, in the DMPO and as elected officials to keep these moving forward, so. Uh, but I wanna thank y'all for what y'all are doing and, uh, keep your head up. They still mean a lot to the, to the community, and we just need to work through these times. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Can we get a five-minute break?
You wanna take a five-minute break? All right, if there's no other budget questions right now, um, let's take a, uh, we're gonna take a five-minute break and we'll reconvene.
I'm sorry, I have one more budget question.
Sure, go ahead.
Which is just, um, maybe to you, Ms. Pinder, can you kind of just talk us through at a high level how you're envisioning ongoing budgeting for COVID-nineteen-related needs? Um, that we would do it sort of on a, as-needed basis moving forward? Or that the CARES funding would kind of help propel that? Or, um, just wondered, would like to hear your thinking on that.
That, we, our plan right now is to work on, we're working on our plan that is due to the state on June first. And that's where we would use the CARES money first. We wanna spend that. We did already spend the first five hundred that the county gave us, and we actually spent a hundred thousand of the second five hundred. So we're about six hundred thousand spent. We are looking to spend our three million dollar for CARES funding first before we will spend any county money. And that is the reason why it's a contingency. If there's any need for county funds, we will come to you and ask you for specific guidance and spending that.
Great. As we move forward in our budget discussions, could we add perhaps a slide that just addresses that? Just to, um, the public can kind of track along with, with that process?
Yes, we will do that as soon as we have our plan all put together with everyone else.
Of course. Yes, no, whenever you all are ready, but thank you very much.
All right, great. Let's take a five-minute break.
Chairman, when we come back, we're gonna pivot to Fletch and, um, Mollendorf. They're here to talk a little bit about the governor's order in the local act. So as long as budget is wrapped up, we'll pivot to the next topic.
Great.
...
And what that encompasses a couple of things we've already been doing, but it says that, you know, businesses have to have a posted emergency maximum occupancy. They have to post signage for best practices for employees and staff as they walk in. They need to conduct daily symptoms of workers and isolate and remove sick workers. So you see that, you'll see that phrase throughout the order often, but it's core signage, screening, and sanitation clause. Mass gathering guidance has changed. It's still ten people indoors, but now outdoors it's been expanded to twenty-five. And this is, we're getting to some specifics, just generally at this point, but restaurants are now open as of Friday for dining services at fifty percent capacity. And there are some other restrictions in the order, but that's the general idea is that restaurants can serve fifty percent order with other capacity depending on square footage. Personal care, grooming, and tattoo parlors, to include, you know, beauty salons, hair salons, nail parlors, can also operate at fifty percent capacity with other restrictions in place. Indoor and outdoor pools can be opened at fifty percent capacity with other restrictions. Day camps and overnight camps are also allowed with restrictions. Parks, trails, and beaches are opened with regulations. Public playgrounds remain closed, and that's different from what the Governor originally proposed for Phase Two. So that, that's, he encouraged those to remain closed, or ordered those to remain closed. Drive-in events are not constrained by mass gathering guidance as long as participants remain in their vehicles. So that twenty-five groups does not apply as long as people remain in their vehicles.
That's a good, I hadn't seen that. Now, any outside gathering would apply to that? I mean, talking about like, anything drive-in that they do not get out of their car?
Correct. So, you know, we've seen people want to do community drive-in theaters. Previously had been really focused on religious services, but those are exempt from any of this now. But we look, as we look at people trying to plan graduations or end-of-year ceremonies for schools, that kind of covers that. They could drive in, stay in their cars. And we've been working with schools to allow them to do parking lot kind of services for graduation, where one by one, students can go to some podium platform, receive a diploma, and have pictures taken. But it's fundamentally, the families are staying in the cars.
Okay.
Entertainment and fitness facilities are remaining closed, and there's, there's some specifications on that in the order.
Okay, one more question there. Now that entertainment, so that doesn't go under the drive-in events? Is, that's two separate things, correct?
Correct. So if there was some kind of entertainment venue, like a movie theater, that was showing outdoor movies, you could drive in. But this, this clause, this entertainment venue here is really talking specifically about like music venues, like the Orange Peel.
Yeah, so should that not say indoor?
Well-
Entertainment and fitness indoor?
It probably does in their guidance, though.
Right, well, the section doesn't say indoor, but if it was outdoor, it would have to be in vehicles. Is that?
Yes, I mean, drive-in, like Sandy mush is having one this weekend.
A drive-in movie-
So would that be considered an event or entertainment?
It, it would not, it's, it's not a facility, so it would apply to the vehicle clause. So that's fine, as long as people stay in their vehicles.
Stay in.
Yeah, if you, if you look at that clause in the order itself in Section Eight, you know, it's talking specifically about venues, you know, like bowling alleys, music venues, amusement parks, dance halls, things like that, facilities. Entertainment and sporting events in large venues are allowed. Kind of what this is talking in general, if you have a venue that has, you know, over five hundred people, you can allow sporting events to happen, to be televised or recorded. But there's still mass gathering guidance for spectators. So potentially, you could have, you know, collegiate basketball game and have the staff and teams playing in a large venue, but spectators would still be limited to twenty-five people. But that way, they could broadcast the events. Those are the salient differences. These are some points of discussion, where I'd like to kind of address some things we're looking at. Kind of do in reverse order here. So summer camps are allowed for day and overnight summer camps. We are recommending aligning with the state on this, but it does give public health some serious concerns. We, we know even on a good year, we have severe problems keeping norovirus out of day and overnight camps. On a good year, and that's the same fundamentals of hand hygiene we see. So there's gonna be extra complexity involved and an extra strain on our communicative disease nurses who have to respond to that, who are now at full capacity just dealing with COVID-19. So what we're asking for is these camp administrators, there's specific guidance for day and overnight camps from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. They need to take a really strong assessment of that and determine whether they can truly meet those requirements or not. And if they can't, we're really asking them to make the judgment to not open if they can't meet those requirements. Because the burden, the potential consequences for their children in the facilities, along with the burden on public health, it can be quite severe. And it's just a, it gives, there's a lot of concern from public health with the opening of day and overnight camps. But our recommendation is to align with the Governor, but just really drive home that they need to follow the guidance and make honest assessments, self-assessments. Moving on to organized sports, we're recommending for Phase Two to put some restrictions, at least on county and city facilities for organized youth and adult sports. Particularly those close-contact sports. What are the, the organized sports, like driven by Parks and Rec?
And could you just say a little bit more about that? Like what are the, to, to, to not, not start them, or start them, and there's special, special policies? Or just say a little bit more about?
Right, I'll ask Josh to come up and speak to that.
So at this time, we'd recommend that, at least for county facilities, that we not return youth sports. There is a mixture of guidance out there that varies from sport to sport. There's nothing universal that allows for protection of players, particularly when it comes to sports where players have to get into each other's personal space, which is most youth sports and, and adult sports. And given that lack of guidance and basic protections that we, as a county, understand that there is liability protections in place by the governing bodies, because we've not seen information that the governing bodies have even cleared those sports to return to play. And just the amount of varied recommendations in the field at this time, that we wait until there's more universal guidance. We have been working with the Sports Commission and a number of partners around the country to try to understand what those recommendations would be. But to give you an example, as of this morning, when we checked into different youth baseball organizations, there was still a variety of guidance. So it makes it hard for us to say we're good with youth sports when we don't know what we should be communicating to our partners. The second part of that is we don't have the staff to maintain the facilities with restroom facilities with the type of sanitation requirements that we have in place now under Phase Two guidance. We'd be trying to have restroom facilities serviced at all of our parks with a staff of less than six people to do that, all of whom are all tasked out to other duties. So at this point, our recommendation would be to step it back and wait until we receive more clear guidance from the state. In communicating with the National, or the North Carolina Parks and Rec Association this morning, there was still not clear understanding of what the Governor's guidance that was put out yesterday means as it applies to youth sports. So again, and so we have that clear guidance that we can universally communicate to all our partners. We'd like to hold off at this point so that we can do so in an organized manner.
Okay, and thanks for the additional details. And the specific recommendation, though, is that that would apply to Buncombe County programs and facilities, not necessarily a universal policy throughout the, throughout the county itself, but just for the county government facilities. Is that correct?
Correct. And I think the one matter of nuance there is we do operate with a number of nonprofit partners that run programming at our facilities rather than us running it ourselves. So we would, we would say that this would apply to all county facilities regardless of who's running the programming.
So when do you expect additional information from the state? I mean, we've, we've, you know, the last time we had, we, we aligned ourselves, but we had a couple of questions. You know, and to me, this kind of feels the same way. In aligning with the state, but getting additional guidance on, I think we had questions on weddings and outdoor weddings or something, I can't remember what it was. But you, but you're saying that we don't have good, clear information from the state as to what organized sports is?
Correct. And we also don't have it from the governing bodies of those sports. So we have like Babe Ruth Baseball, North Carolina Youth, North Carolina Youth League Soccer, the Adult Soccer League, all of whom are at this point a little bit divergent. So with that kind of plethora of divergent guidance out there, it's really hard to communicate to all of our partners. We're kind of watching that converge at this point, but I would say it would be at least a week before we would be able to to provide clear guidance that applied universally across sports at our facilities.
So can can we not, can we not do what we did before, align and then get that information as we move forward? Because a lot of these are not even gonna take place. I mean, you know, Babe Ruth and some of those, you know, the, I, I don't know that, that they'll even make the decision to do it.
So Commissioner, what we're asking is not, on this specific point, not to align with the Governor at this point. So our recommendation will be not to align on county facilities for organized sports, but we can come back and change that once we have guidance and once we have the staff. Josh mentioned that he doesn't have the staff either to open the facilities at the level of cleanliness that we will want to do as well, because staff is deployed and stretched thin at this point. So our ask is on county facilities and anyone using county facilities for organized sports is that we do not align at this point.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to lodging. Earlier this week, I recommended that we remove our restriction on leisure travel bookings going forward on the twenty-second. We, we would recommend, though, maintaining a fifty percent capacity for hotels, but breaking that out specifically from the hotel industry to B and Bs, to homestays, and having clear, separate guidance for each of those in regards to capacity and room turnover, as far as having, you know, twenty-four hours between our room bookings.
So Fletcher, let me go back to, and I probably, I probably was just not listening on, on restaurants. So on restaurants-
Oh, we, we haven't, we haven't gone to restaurants yet.
You haven't?
We're doing it in reverse order.
Then I was listening, great, then, wasn't it?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Now, to speak to restaurants. We've seen a, a document coming out from a combination of Department of Health and Human Services of the state and the North Carolina Restaurant Association. Very clear guidance on how to operate. It's also kind of expounded upon in the order itself and the accompanying FAQ document. One point where we, Public Health recommends being more strict is that the guidance we've seen kind of allows for self-service buffets with certain practices put in place. We would like to just say for the remainder of Phase Two, no self-service, no buffets at restaurant. So align with the state for restaurant guidance with the exception of self-service buffet options.
So let me give you a, a comment on that. I had, I had heard, you know, in, in, in another state close by that, you know, it depends on where you go, there's, there's a lot of buffets, but they had, it was Tennessee. They had their, they had their buffet open. However, the customers were not, they were giving, they were, they were plating the food. They were giving the customers the food, the, the people that worked at the restaurant. So, and the input I got back was that it was, you know, of course, they have everything, everything else within the restaurant, whatever the requirements are, you know, and the workers were, were-
Right, so-
Providing the food, so there was no contact. You'd have, you know, Plexiglas, you know, not allowing any contact with any of the food, et cetera.
Right, and so that would be, that would be the, the workers doing the service still. So it wouldn't be necessarily self-service.
No, it wouldn't. The workers would be, right, it's a, well, if you say no buffet, then, you know, places like Ryan's is done. Unless you say that, that buffet is allowed if X, Y, and Z is, is done.
Right, they would have to adapt to not allow for the self-service component of the buffet. And I, I think we've seen willingness to do that and a lot of forward thinking from the restaurants that do have buffets. I can't speak to Ryan's, but from the town halls we've had, being willing to do that.
Yeah.
The buffets are okay if you, if it's not self-serve.
Okay, so we, we can make that distinction.
Can we take that, then, no buffet, then, just say no self-service?
You'd have to say no self-service.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a plan for that.
Yeah, it'd be similar to J and S Cafeteria. It's like a buffet, but you're not serving yourself. Yeah, that's a good example. That's basically-
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll come up with a good, good language for that. Moving on, Section 1.1 of the order defines bars, which I don't believe previously in the state had a clear definition. So I think this is the state attempting to define. I'll just read it real quick. Bars means establishments that are not eating establishments or restaurants as defined in North Carolina General Statute there, that we have a permit to, that have a permit to sell alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption under North Carolina General Statute 18B 1001, and that are principally engaged in the business of selling alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption. So I know we've been getting questions, and there's maybe a question for Michael Frew, but we get a lot of questions about, do brewery taprooms fall in this definition as bars? To what extent those breweries with outdoor venues fall under this order? And, you know, how, how they're different from a bar or nightclub? And so we're still working through the definition of how that would apply specifically to breweries and brewery taprooms.
Fletcher, excuse me, sir. If those brewery taprooms provide meals, that's an eating statute then, at that point?
Correct. So there are establishments in town that have a restaurant and brewery, so they would clearly be able to operate under the restaurant clause. But there are some who are primarily distribution sites, brewing sites that have taprooms. They have food on site, such as food trucks. They have large outdoor spaces. I think from local attorneys and communications I've seen around the state, people are looking at the, the final clause there, and that are principally engaged in the business of selling alcoholic beverages. There's some debate on that. I know there's pressure being put on the Governor to clarify this definition. I want you to let, you know, that we're looking for some further guidance to see if the state does clarify that. Trying to see where breweries and ta, taprooms fall in under this. And finally, moving on to face coverings. In, in this Governor's order from the state, as we open up those close-contact services such as beauty parlors, barber shops, you know, nail salons, they are mandated for the service providers in those close-contact services. For restaurants, the language is that they are strongly encouraged. I think that's understanding that restaurants have a variety of roles, from front of house to back of house, and making accommodations for that. And then, and the state's order is just recommended for all public settings. So, but what we're recommending from Public Health is to make, for businesses with public-facing employees, to make that use of masks mandatory as we see with close-contact services. And then, again, have a strong, strong encouragement for greater mask use in the community is our current recommendation.
So what would be the difference, do you think, between the state as far as the business is concerned? The additional requirement, are you thinking that's gonna affect thirty percent of the businesses out there? I mean, it's mandated for close-contact services, which are quite a bit of businesses.
Mm-hmm, it is.
I mean, and some chains are, you know, or, or local businesses are requiring it anyhow. You know, I personally think that from the, the, the business community within Buncombe County will do a very good job on, you know, on protecting their people and protecting their, their patrons.
I, I agree. From the town halls we've had, the communities, the specific close-contact services have been very proactive and forward-leaning and thinking through how they can, first of all, require these resources and then implement them and change their mode of business.
Yeah, so I mean, I, so I like that particular language, I think. And, and you've been on the town halls, so you have more of a, more of a feel for their commitment at this point in time, which I, I think is very high from, from, from everyone.
So, so I think, I think the difference, what we see here is that it's already mandated by the state for those close-contact services. Previously, we've seen grocery stores and other retail have language from the state and ours is strongly recommended. So we're thinking about, you know, including that to all retail, all groceries, that's mandated. If you're a public employer and those public-facing employees need to wear a mask, and then strongly encouraging it for the, the public.
So when you say public-facing, you're talking about a checkout?
Yeah, there's an example of a checkout, or, you know, people staffing or dealing with inventory in like, in like a boutique or something.
So, so Fletcher, the, the state order, they use the word strongly encourage for workers as well. So, but we're gonna try, we're gonna say require. I can't, I'm just asking, can, can we, can we say those words? I mean, if the state is saying, if the Governor's saying, we strongly encourage workers at restaurants to wear face coverings, our difference is we're saying you have to. What, can we make that, can we make, can we say that? Is that legally for us to say that you have to put, tell an employee they have to put a face covering on?
I, I think we can't, we have the allowance to be more restrictive than the state.
We have the allowance to be more restrictive in these orders, but when we're talking about requiring someone to do something on them as an individual?
Right. I, I, I think, I think about how, you know, at restaurants, we ask people to wear hairnets to keep the hair out of food, or we ask, assume that people wash their hands after they use the bathroom. I think, when I think about this, I think about it, it's another public health measure to enforce general public health, safety. So that, that's the point of view. I think we're coming at it from public health. It's another step to protect general public health that we're asking, you know, businesses to do, just as if we ask, force them to wash their hands after using the bathroom, or wear a hairnet if they're preparing our food.
I mean, I know where we're, I know which way we're coming at it, but I just want to make sure that somebody doesn't come up and say, hey, you, you know, we, I just want to make sure.
We, we can, I'll, I'll get with Michael and we'll, we'll vet that.
Because to me, I mean, I mean, the Governor has his, his orders. And, and, and you can see some of the stories across the country where the Governor's orders have been tested.
Yes.
And, and to me, and I know we have, we have the freedom to go more restrictive. But, but do we step over the line by going more restrictive and, and risk these things coming back to the county that the Governor's trying to, to, to fend off when he's saying strongly encouraged to wear face coverings and we're saying required? Please, I just, and I know it's word semantics, all that stuff, but I just want to make sure.
We'll, we'll look at that once we break from here. I, I would say, I think this is a very good middle ground between balancing priorities of public health and respecting people's rights as individuals. That's why we contemplated it from the angle of employees. We're not mandating it for the general public as much as Public Health would like to, but we're just asking, you know, strong encouragement for the general public, mandating for employers.
Somebody?
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay.
And then Jasmine will follow you.
Okay. I think putting retail business and restaurants all together with me having a restaurant, I think it ought to be put totally separate. Because what is not in that retail, business, restaurant? What are we not saying you gotta wear a mask in? Because that's hitting every business, every retail. So what that says is we're mandating it for everyone anywhere you go except your house or car, correct?
No.
No, what?
We're only mandating it for employers. So if-
Employees, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, i- in their place of business.
In their place of business.
Right.
Everyone that does anything in Ingalls, Walmart, restaurants-
If they're public-facing. So if somebody was in the back of house doing stock inventory, or somebody at a restaurant is washing dishes, it wouldn't be mandated there. But if somebody's at Ingalls stocking shelves in the store, or at checkout lane, or at a restaurant, the servers or hostesses and hosts would, would be required to wear one.
So every business in Buncombe County that works for them will wear a mask according to this.
That's the recommendation from Public Health.
Yeah, I, I think you've got to separate restaurants from that. I think, I just don't know how you can tell everyone they've got to. I understand the health on the restaurant end of it, is you're messing with people's food, hairnets, gloves, all. But I think putting all three of them together, you or we are opening a can of worms right here.
I, I would think, from the town halls, we've had several with the restaurant industry. We've been in constant conversations with the air group. A lot of them intend on enforcing this already themselves for their, for their servers and for the, the hosts. So, and it's, they've been asking us to go further than that and mandate, you know, the public to, a mandate for public to wear face masks. And we understand there, there's, it's a very complex issue. If, there's some big challenges there. So we're finding this middle ground to mandate it for employers and then- So we're finding this middle ground um to mandate it for employers and then strong encouragement for the for the uh for the general public. Jasmine?
Um, I'd actually like to dig into this and discuss um what it would look like to require masks across the board as a way to more safely move into phase two. Um, the primary reason I want to introduce that is because I'm just really concerned about what the numbers are telling us in Buncombe County right now. Um, as we've talked about so many times, the governor's office is making a decision on the basis of a hundred counties. Some of those counties have a thousand cases, some of them have one. And part of our work is how do we really localize this process? And I don't know if it's possible to get up on the live screen, the or up on the screen sort of the live uh data that was just updated a few minutes ago. Um, if it's not, I can kind of just walk through the numbers because it just came up. But if it is possible, Max.
Bun- Buncombe ready that word.
And it, thank you. Um, just in brief, and the numbers will come up in a second, but as as we think about the local trends, we're seeing a fairly steep rise in cases. We're seeing um so 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 cases have more than doubled in the last week. Uh, last Thursday morning, they were a hundred two. Uh, and now they're two hundred sixteen cases. So they've more than doubled. Deaths were, I think, four last Thursday. They're now seven. So they've increased, seen sort of seventy-five percent increase there. Um, the rate of positivity based on these numbers is up to five point oh, uh which is a significant increase from the three, whatever it was at. The state's at seven point three, I think. So we're not at that, which is really good news. Um, and yesterday, the Citizen Times published information around Mission's current caseload. I think they have seven or eight patients as of yesterday who had tested positive compared to four the week prior. They have fifty-six patients with suspected COVID nineteen compared to thirteen the week prior. So more than quadrupling, if I'm doing math on the spot, which I can't necessarily be relied on. So anyway, in short, we're seeing hospitalizations, case numbers, deaths, positivity rate all increase. In the good news department, the testing numbers are going, are increasing, which is really great. But I just, I have, like all of us, I've been wrestling with this and up late at night thinking about it and I the the big picture good news in all this is our numbers are still a lot lower than so many other places. Um, but they're increasing. So we were in the number ten slot in the most populous counties. We're now in the either eight or nine slot depending on some of those updates. And it, and and I also think we are yet to really understand whether going into phase one has impacted case count because we don't yet have real time data from that. We will probably in a week. Um, I I if if I was making a decision, I would say let's stay in phase one through Memorial Day till we have more data, see what that data tells us and then make a more informed decision. I don't think there's necessarily the will to do that. So so I I would like to explore if we are going to move into phase two, doing so with a um requirement that folks wear face masks when they are um out in public to protect themselves, to protect other people. We'd be following suit with um what Durham County has done if we were to take that step. Um, so I'll pause there and 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 kind of look forward to hearing other people's thoughts.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'll I'll chime in as well. I've I've also been thinking about this question quite a bit. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult decision from the standpoint of, you know, all of us, we all have different kind of views on public policy, role of government, things like that. But regardless of where you come down on those, you know, nobody wants to see the government issuing these kind of directives that are very personal, right? How people attire themselves. But um while that's true, and I certainly share that, there's just a, there's just a really expansive amount of growing research showing that a community's uh participation rate in wearing masks is one of the most powerful predictors in the spread of COVID nineteen, right? This is a highly contagious, primarily airborne transmitted disease, right? So um and and, you know, and I think our understanding around this issue has changed a lot from where we were a couple of months ago to where we are today because it's been getting attention, you know, all around the country, all around, all around the world. And um but as I've tried to sort of study it, you know, what's the big takeaways to me are that, you know, I think kind of intuitively, people might have started when this thing began, like, let's wear a mask because it protects you. I think what we've kind of realized more and more as it's been researched is that it's not really a major protection for the person wearing it from like, you know, being transmitted the disease. But it is a very powerful, um has a powerful effect on reducing and suppressing the spread of COVID nineteen from when, you know, we exhale, like we all, we're breathing in, we're breathing out. And so when people wear masks, it significantly reduces the amount of transmission for people who who are positive, many of whom don't know it. You know, many people who are positive don't know it. Um and when you're in an indoor environment, I think it's, you know, much more important for an indoor environment than an outdoor environment. You know, the uh if if a high percentage or universal, you know, group of people are wearing masks compared to not, the way that this virus will be transmitted through the air, that we're all kind of breathing together, right? So I um and I I share Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrar's concerns about the the growth in numbers we've seen. We are still lower than most places across the state. But I just think it's really important that we do everything we can, that we don't want to be here in a month or two and look back and say, God, can't you remember when we were, we were the lowest in the state? And is there anything, anything we could have done differently to have kept it that way? And as I think about this, you know, as there are more sectors opening up under the state's directive, which I think we're going to generally follow, I mean, there might be a few, I mean, whether we do overnight camps a little differently is a fairly small decision in the totality of, you know, restaurants reopening, things like that. To me, I keep coming back to this is probably one of the most effective tools that we have that we could use to suppress the transmission of this disease as more parts of the economy are opening up. If we, if we do do this, you know, I would say I certainly don't think that this is something that we should be doing on any kind of, you know, long term basis. I see this as kind of a tool that we might want to use during phase two. None of us have ever been through this before, right? We had to kind of put the economy on ice and now it's coming back online. And uh and we don't know how that's going to look, but this is a tool that we know can make it safer. We know that the the places in the world that had high, real, real high participation rates in masks, many of them were mandated, have have gotten through this with a lot lower rates of illness than uh than others. The other reason that I have kind of come around to this idea is that, you know, western North Carolina is a place that a lot of people travel to and through from around the country. You know, if we were, if we were, you know, a rural county and mostly just the people who are there are the people who are there, you know, I'd probably think about it really differently. Uh if it was just our resident population that we were thinking about, I have, I think the people of Buncombe County have done a terrific job in terms of doing the right thing to stay safe. We've seen that over the last month and a half. But if restaurants are reopened, you know, there's going to be a lot more people as they have been for decades and especially in the last few years are gonna are gonna be coming to our community. I saw a survey that someone put online. And it was a, it was a young person and a college student that together they worked on this kind of survey of going out and just kind of interviewing people on the streets, like, hey, where are you from? They kind of made notes of who's wearing masks, who's not, what were they here for? And uh it was real friendly, it was real low key, but um it it definitely showed that there were a lot more people who were from here who were wearing masks than the people who were coming here from somewhere else. And so as we see more of that, I think it's, you know, it's important to our economic um to our economy going forward, but as these people are going in our businesses, then um I want to make sure we're we're protecting the the people who work there, not just protecting them from the, from the, from the employees who work there. But I want to protect our workers from folks who mean no harm, but but many of whom will have this illness and um and not know it. So those are, those are a few of my thoughts on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may, if if I go to a business and that business is saying I have to have a shoes and a shirt on and they wa- wear down masks, I can understand that. I'll put a mask on. But what's that going to look like if you're saying we're going to require everybody, everybody to have a mask? I mean, we're gonna, if you don't have a mask, you're going to get arrested? Is, I mean, I'd like to know what that looks like. We, we cited a restaurant, they didn't want to go against an order. We cited a restaurant because those people have no money. So now I'm going to ask you, as a citizen of this county, if I leave my house to go on a walk somewhere and I don't have a mask, is a law enforcement officer going to arrest me or cite me? What's that going to look like?
Yeah.
Because I have the freedom in this county and this country to make a decision that's going to, that now, now I understand, please, please. I understand that I risk taking, getting this thing from somebody else and taking it to someone. I understand that. But the thing is though, is some folks are going to like, what are you going to do? Am I going to be arrested? I'm asking you, am I going to be arrested for wearing a mask, for not wearing a mask?
Yeah, well, it's a great question. So um first of all, I would say, and again, this is just, you know, this is my thoughts on it. I'm not trying to speak for anyone else, but just based on kind of what I've tried to learn about um about this. Um, I would say, you know, this is a policy that should be considered for indoor commercial facilities. If you're outdoors, I mean, everything about, I think what we've been learning about this is that if you're outdoors, the risk level is just a thousand times less, right? So I don't think this is something that, um I mean, if someone wants to wear a mask outside when they're doing something, great. But it's not something that would be, you know, I think the question is whether for commercial indoor environments where people have to go work because they do have to feed their family. It's not really a choice. Are we going to protect those people from people who are coming in that store who don't don't know? I mean, nobody wants to do anything wrong, but a lot of people who have this disease just don't know it and they're going to be interacting there. And if most of them or all of them have masks, I think the data is pretty clear. The chance of that worker or a bunch of workers getting sick is much lower. So it's it's for indoor commercial environments, not what people do in their homes, not people, people doing stuff outside. In terms of the question about enforcement, it's a really legitimate question. I think um from what I've researched, because a lot of different states around the country, whole states are doing this. Uh Colorado's been doing it for a while. Um, New Mexico's doing it. A bunch of states are doing this statewide and then a bunch of cities and counties are doing it individually. And I think the the general consensus is that, no, nobody's going to get arrested for not wearing a mask, right? The police, actual police department, Buncombe County Sheriff's Department, they've got bigger challenges that they need to be focused on than whether somebody's not following the mask policy, right? So I think we should acknowledge if we, if we do this, that it's not going to be for for individuals. This is not going to be a police enforced policy. So so I would say that's my answer.
Okay, then so then I'll go back to my original thing about businesses, putting the business being the one that puts the requirement. When, I think when government puts requirement on the people, then we 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 overstep. We over, we, I mean, we do. What I'm saying is, is if, I I I will support businesses making the decision. And now that's where I want to go back to the legal aspect. Can I force, can we, or can through public health, can through this, there there's some law out there that says you have to have shoes and shirts. So under that same guidance or law, can that business put mask and then let it be that business owner that says, hey, my employees are going to wear it and anyone coming in here is going to wear it? And and I can, I can accept that. But I do know in Oklahoma City, they put a mandatory mask thing on and then about two days later, something came out and they took it back. So so while there's people, cities that have been doing this, there's just as many cities that have done it and took it back. So I, that's, that's, we'll go back, go back to that original. So.
So and I go back to the state, you know, the state mandated requirements are not, are not bad. They're, they're uh, they're safe. They're probably not as safe for some people and they're probably too strict, you know, for others. And, you know, it's amazing to me how, uh, I mean, I think for a a mask, I wear this when I go out and and I use it not for myself, but I use it for others if I'm in a situation where, you know, I'm going to be in close contact with that person for a while, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that up. I'm gonna make them more comfortable. And that's, but that's, that's, that tends to be the way I I do that. I don't, you know, I, a thought came to me is, you know, somebody gets in their, and this is just what popped in my head. Somebody gets in their, in their, in their, in their truck from, from Haywood County and they're bringing their lawnmower over to get it fixed at the place that I take and they, they go in there and and then they can't go in the place. And because they have to have a, they have to have a mask. Now, if that's required by that, that owner, it's still going to be, it's still going to be very difficult. But um I'm just not ready to tell, you know, the general public that, I mean, I just, it just doesn't. And we need to do this very, this is something that, I mean, we can kind of get in into it on some things, you know, but this is, you know, this needs to be, this is very personal, very respectful. People have to make some of those decisions and I um you know, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure how comfortable people are going to be going into somewhere where I I mean, I mean, I got two four-year-old grandkids and I think about them, you know, masks are very traumatic for particularly one of them. You know, masks are are very scary, you know, and now, you know, and people are, you know, they got masks and they got, you know, different designs on them and they're very, I mean, they're, they are, they're, they're kind of traumatic for some kids.
I I think that's a matter of messaging and that's where I see part of our role as public health. And something I've taken as a personal crusade over the last couple of weeks is to get rid of that stigma, that fear of masks, that it's not because you're afraid, it's because you care about others. You realize that by wearing a mask, you're worried about somebody else's grandmother who maybe you never met. And teaching children that a mask isn't a sign of fear or threats, it's a sign of protection and caring. So those are my thoughts on masks. I think um we've looked at this very hard for a month about ma- the mask question, the complexities. And we've seen from the country and internationally in mandating it, there's extremely complex. I just think where we arrived at our recommendation, where we thought was a middle ground, where we can require through public health code, basically, businesses with front, forward-facing, public-facing employees to wear and then have um the public a strong recommendation for them to increase our numbers of compliance.
Mr. Chairman, I have questions.
Uh, hang on, let's uh, let's hear from any other commissioners. You haven't spoken on this issue yet.
Where I'm coming from, let me, since this, the governor's uh telecast last night, five o'clock, I talked, two small business owners called me at home, one around seven thirty and another one maybe around eight thirty. I talked to three this morning, three of them in the downtown area and three are not. I mean, two are not. But the gist of the conversation was this, they are saying that they are going to require their, and two were restaurants, three were not, they're going to require their uh employees to wear masks. But they said they want to require the customers too to wear masks, but it would help if they had, they could say that in Buncombe County, we're requiring masks. Uh, this was coming from them. Uh, and sure, I mean, it might be mixed. Maybe I talked to just five people and it's twenty-five not for it. But, you know, everything that I read and talking about the safety and nobody hates wearing a mask more than I do. I'll admit that.
I don't know.
Um, but what we look at for the safety of the people in Buncombe County and all, I think to me, it's no brainer. You know, I think that's what comes first, the safety of the people in the county. And when I see we have seven deaths, to me, I feel bad when I see one death. But as that goes up, I think as the elected officials, it's our job to do all we can to help save the lives and to make sure that, sure, we operate as we can. We got to think about the economy and all, but the bottom line. But the bottom line is still the safety of the population and to make sure that we do that. And I think that's one of, we have that obligation, and it's not always going to be easy decisions. And we might not, you know, be liked by everybody for what we do. But my deal is, I want to be able to sleep at night with the decisions I make and feel comfortable that we're doing what's best for the 260,000-plus people in Buncombe County. And I think this is what this is all about. And this is why they elected us. We've got to make some decisions, some we don't like. But I think we've got to think of what's important to the people who we represent.
Commissioner Wrightsides, you and I may have talked to some of the same folks. I'm hearing some similar conversations from business and restaurant owners as well. And their employees want to go back to work, they need the money. And what I'm hearing is, and yet they're scared to go back to work. That they're more than willing to wear the face coverings, but the conversations I've had is, please protect my employees so that they will come back to work and that I'm not having to hire and train new people. Please give the appearance that you care about the folks that are working in my business. And that really gave me pause that, I think this is the elephant in the room that we haven't said, and I may be opening a whole conversation, that love it or hate it, and we're not going to debate that, we're, our economy is driven by tourism. And we talk about opening our occupancy to 50%. We talk about doing that in order, I can't talk with this on at the same time, which is a real problem, I'm sorry. We know that in order to move our economy forward, we have to do these things. And we are going to rely on people from outside of Buncombe County in North Carolina to come visit Asheville. We have an opportunity as Buncombe County leaders to say, we want not only the tourists who are coming to propel our economy forward to be safe, but we recognize how important these employees in the tourism-driven economy are to Buncombe County, and we want to protect you. We talk over and over that the tourism industry pays low. We can debate that, we can talk about how those employees are treated in that industry. We have, again, the chance to be leaders, true leaders, and say, we care about you. And we're going to make Buncombe County and Asheville a safe place for everyone, the people who live here, the people who are coming to visit. And I think down the road, we could look back on this and say Asheville and Buncombe County were leaders in reopening the tourism economy in a really safe way that was safe for everyone. So with all that said, of course, I think that lends itself to where I fall on the mask wearing. I've been wearing my cute little chicken mask for weeks and months now, wherever I go. The one thing that I don't want to forget in the midst of all of this, as we are talking about masks, is we do have communities right here in Buncombe County who fall victim to racial profiling. And when you are required to wear a mask, that makes that oftentimes, that racial profiling more common. And I want to acknowledge that, I want to be aware of that, particularly for our men and women of color in Buncombe County as we're asking them to do that. We talk about fear of masks, the fear for those folks putting them on is a very real fear. And we can't ignore that as part of our conversation. And Dr. Mulendor and Fletch, again, I cannot say it enough, thank you for the work that you're doing. You're approaching this from such a science and data-driven perspective, and that makes making decisions from where I sit so much easier. So I commend you for what you're providing us.
Okay. Just finish up on that, is I still want to say the restaurants should be separate from that. Anybody in the restaurant that's working, I think they should have a mask if that's it. But the people coming in should have, if they walk in and see they hadn't got the mask, they can very willingly turn around and walk out of restaurants, business off. Now, one thing I just want to bring up, Al and Amanda, to require the people coming into a restaurant to eat with a mask, Amanda, you had trouble talking with the mask on, how are you going to eat with it on?
Just to clarify, Commissioner, what we're recommending is only for the staff required.
Right, I'm just...
And it'll be up to the restaurant to determine whether or not customers coming in are required to wear one. Obviously, you can't eat when you wear a mask.
Right, you can't talk.
But what we've heard from the restaurants...
But I think that there's interest in going beyond that.
Yeah.
Going on beyond...
I think there's interest in making it a requirement for people within the commercial facilities, not just the employees, because we need to protect the employees.
Yeah, so that's what I want to bring us back to. So we talk about like equity being very important in this community, but if you think about who are the employees, right? Like, we need to protect the employees too. And so I get the whole like freedom, but I look at it as freedom from disease. Like, the freedom of this community from COVID, right? That's my public health frame. And so it comes kind of from a point of privilege to be able to not have to wear a mask when we're telling our essential workers, who often are, you know, people of color or, you know, come from lower income, like, you need to wear a mask and then anybody walking in the store. So I just, I just want to say that, I just got to get that off my chest. And I also just want us to recognize, like, it is really hard. Like, I've been in this since January, and I haven't had a lot of time to stop and like think. My kids start in kindergarten this fall. I haven't had time to stop and really think what that's going to look like. But we have to stop and think, what we knew in early January, that life we lived in 2019, that's not coming back right now, like, for a while. So we are, this, when we say new normal, like, this is real, right? Like, we have, we can't, we are not ready, we can't return to that. And so like, this is a whole new world, and we have to understand that this is going to take sacrifice, right? This is gonna, we are going to have to give up a little bit of what we once knew, and it's, I'm not happy about it. I mean, we're going through the stages of grief, right? But I think like, we need, like, this virus is our enemy, we should not be each other's enemy. This, we have to pull together, and we have to understand that to protect our community, right? To keep that case count from continuing to go up and up and up, and to keep our fatality count from going up and up and up, it's going to require all of us to sacrifice something, right? For, when we look at our, when you look at our case count and you look at the racial breakdown, it is, there is significant disproportionality there, right? Because we are talking about individuals in our community that work these essential jobs, that are out there taking care of people every day while other people get to stay at home, right? And they might live in large households because they can't afford to live in, you know, just with their spouse or their children in a house. They, and so like, I think we need to keep those people in mind, like, who, it's, it is about me, it's about my sons, about my husband, but it's about all of us. And who is the most vulnerable in our community? And I, this is an opportunity, I think, for our community to step up and like really do what's right. And I get it, it's the same thing I struggle against with immunizations, right? Mandating immunizations and having people, you know, the whole freedom to do what I think is best for myself and my family. But again, that has impact beyond just your family. And so I just had to get that out because that's been weighing on my shoulders for quite a long time.
So, Dr. Mulendor, I thank you for that. And, you know, it's, I can't imagine trying to talk through any of this and not be emotional. I mean, I get it the same way too, you know, with, within my family. But we really appreciate the job that you're doing, and no one needs to be... It's like I said before, I said, we can go ahead and on some other things, you know, but on this one right here, we just need to have a good discussion. And what we have to do is to be able to bring to light the concerns that we hear throughout the communities and that, you know, that we hear. I don't think requiring masks for customers is very realistic. You know, I don't, I just don't see that being very realistic, given... I just see, think it'd be very, very difficult lift. And there is, I mean, most things I come at, I come at from a papal's perspective. And it's just the way I am, you know, and I, you know, and, you know, we may say, well, to teach someone that a mask is okay, that's tough sometimes. And so what happens is you just kind of keep them away from it until you might be able to get them to be more comfortable with something like that, but...
Mr. Chairman, sir, may I ask? The state order says children under 12 are exempt. So are we saying we're going to do that as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think children...
So, okay, so we're going to do that. And then, and then if I could make one more comment, Dr. Mulendor Fletch, thank you so much for everything you've done. And Fletch, you gave a thing, probably the first, second day or so I met with you, you had gave a speech at the EOC, and I went to Ms. Pendleton and I said, we got to make sure we take care of it because it was a burden, and it is, and I want to make sure that both y'all are taken care of in any way that we can help, because it has been, you've been dealing with this way before. And, but I wanted to make sure that we understand that, Commissioner, it's not that I don't care about the employees. That's not it, it never has been. And I don't know if that was directed in my thought, my thought is, it's not about masks, it's not about masks. It's about government mandating masks and having a business owner saying that you're required to wear it as an employee and you're required to wear it as my customer. That's, I support wearing masks. If I can get a haircut this, in the next two or three days, I'll wear three masks. The issue is, is government mandating citizens to do something, whereas the business owner could go ahead and say, all my employees are going to have to wear them, and anyone who comes in here will have to wear them. That is, that's my, I guess, my issue with the whole thing about the mask, is whether it's government mandate or business saying that you're going to have to do it, so.
My comments were not specifically directed to anyone up here, I'm speaking very generally.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Mulendor, for sharing those perspectives. And I think it's so important that every step of the way, we are keeping front and center the experiences of those in our community who are most vulnerable for a wide range of factors, including race, including income, including age, including having pre-existing conditions. You know, Fletcher, you said the other night, and I thought you said it as well as I've heard anyone say it, is as we open our community back up, we're going to see more cases and more deaths. And that's what we have to sit with, that's just real. And then the question becomes, what steps can we take to do everything in our power to reduce the number of cases and reduce the number of deaths? I've heard a lot of conversation about people saying, well, it's not that bad, really. And there are examples of cases that are fairly mild. My best friend is an infectious disease doctor in North Carolina and is treating people with COVID right now, COVID-19. And we were in touch this week, and she said, the thing that is most terrifying about this as a medical professional is that we cannot medically predict who is going to survive and who's going to die. It doesn't make sense. She talked about treating a family where there were, they're seeing lots of family clusters, as you alluded to here. So they had siblings in their 30s admitted. One was going home, the other died, and they didn't know why. We have to understand the gravity of that. And I'll be honest, if, we should all be wearing masks in here right now. I don't know why we're not. This is probably the sixth hour we've spent together this week. I love all of you, I truly love you. Whatever you think about me, I love you, I can't help it. But I don't know why we're not wearing masks. I have a chronic condition, I would rather not wear a mask, I've got to, my family can't afford for me to get sick. For every one of us, there's a story like that. It's really, really deeply personal, we're all scared. And there will be people for whom, if we do decide to move forward with requiring masks in our community, there will be people who are very upset about that. And I get that. Anytime government takes a new step into personal freedom, it's something we have to take very, very seriously. And having weighed it and argued in my own mind and talked to a lot of people in the last week, it's one I feel comfortable supporting and one that I'll advocate for. And wherever we land on this, it's one I'm going to keep talking about, because if we are determined to move into phase two, and again, I really wish we'd pump the brakes on that, Durham County's doing that. They have the highest case count in the state, so they're in a different situation, but they are implementing a much more restrictive version of phase two. I wish we would take the time to take a closer look on that because of what our dad is doing right now. I don't know if that's going to happen, but if we're going to move forward in the ways we're discussing, it feels not just like the most responsible thing, not just like the most compassionate and necessary thing, but it's a way to save lives moving forward. Commissioner Pendleton, you raised a question about the legality of this. I think it would be great to get a clear opinion on that. Just in a little bit of research, as Commissioner Newman alluded to, we do see other states doing this. Durham County has had an order like this in effect for several weeks, I believe. I'm not aware of any legal challenges. In Oklahoma, there's a city that rescinded theirs, but that was because people were threatening employees who were enforcing it. It wasn't a question of the legality of it, it was because community members were being asked to put masks on and were actually physically threatening people. So to me, what that speaks to is if our community gets on board with this, embraces this, it becomes the new normal that we're all wear masks instead of, you're in an environment, and a lot of people aren't wearing masks in this room. So that's, we're not modeling how to move through this in a healthy way. And it's a personal choice right now, it's one that perplexes me, but that's a different story. But, you know, I'm not aware of any legal guidance suggesting that we wouldn't be able to do this, but I'd certainly, you're right, it would be irresponsible of us to move forward if we are to without looking at that.
I can offer a couple of thoughts. The new executive order does retain elements of Executive Order 1 through 8 regarding the autonomy of local governments, counties, and cities. So counties and cities here are still allowed to make restrictions, greater restrictions than the state order has in place, except for, the only exception is retail occupancy. There can't be greater restriction for retail occupancy locally. In, I've heard a number of mentions about what retail owners may do. Retail owners may require everyone who comes in to wear masks, just like no shirts, no service. If they don't do so, it would be a trespass, so they do have that power. And the county has that power as well. The county can require that people going into businesses can also wear that. That would be more restrictive than the state, I think would also be allowed. As to the other questions that we're talking about, just as a reminder for everybody, any restrictions that are imposed must be founded in fact and reasonably tailored to limit the threat presented. And they would apply to municipalities in Buncombe County only if they consented to and asked for that to be the case. And I'd be happy to try to answer any of the questions you might have.
So, let me, can I ask a question? Are there any other, I kind of feel like we should, are there any other things we need to give feedback on? I mean, the mask issue is getting a lot of attention. Anything else we want to, let's kind of see if there's any else we want to give guidance on, and then let's come back to you and kind of try to bring that issue to closure.
I only had that one slide of points of concern. The rest of my presentation was walking through here. We addressed everything on here. This was just the slides walking us through again, what it looks, the difference between phase one and phase two. You can see here the big difference between enhanced mass gathering guidance, so we could go from 10 persons indoors and 25 people outside. The local travel is now open with the rescinding of the stay-at-home order. We now have this safer-at-home recommendation. Face covering is on here, currently as written is strongly encouraged. We have not adapted that yet with our, you know, the discussions that are ongoing. Looking through particular sectors, childcare is now fully open, similar to as it was in phase one. We added nightclub since they were specifically addressed, and the governor's order was not previously in, but those remain closed. Restaurants, you know, on dining with restrictions. Barbers and salons open with restrictions. Those entertainment venues remain closed. Still, long-term care has strict restrictions on visitors. Worship is now, worship and religious ceremonies are now exempt from the order, but we still recommend the three W's. Leisure tourism bookings will, would be allowed. We've allowed them to make those bookings, but we're, recommendations allow them to proceed with those bookings. Again, allowance for reservations with restrictions that we've discussed. Outdoor sporting events, um, you know, we, we had that recommendation from Parks and Rec to delay county-run organized events. And then a lot of the other stuff follows the new mass gathering guidance or specifically outlined state protocols such as for day camps, overnight camps, or, um, you know, restaurants and things like that. That, that was the entirety of my presentation.
Thanks, Fletch. Are there any other comments on items unrelated to the mask topic? Yeah.
Yeah, um, on the, um, county-run events? So, can we, should we add that that includes those, um, like the?
They, the nonprofit related, yes, yes, sir.
In county parks, because the way it makes, it says county-run events, but, and, and that, reason that is we don't have the guidance and the fact that we don't have the staff.
Correct.
To clean the bathrooms per the, the cleaning guidelines.
Yes, sir, and I'll, I'll reflect that in the language, and I would make that clear, that it's, um, you know, the facilities, whether or not this county organization's using those facilities and reflect that.
All right, anything else on anything not a mask? All right. Okay, let's come back to the mask issue. So, um, it's a hard, it's a hard one. If someone had asked me where was, where I was at on this even honestly a week ago, I would, I would have been in a different place. But, um, we're all just living into this, trying to learn as we go. Some of the other decisions that have been made, I mean, there's some things that are in our control, and then other things are just, you know, courts make certain decisions on different issues, things change. Some protections we had a week ago, we don't have anymore. And they greatly concern me. This is, this is a tool that's in the toolbox, and I think that, are we ever going to get, you know, kind of universal wearing of masks? No, we're not, that's not, that's not going to happen. There's some people who are never going to put on a mask, and that's just the way the world works. And, um, but I do believe if we adopt a policy that in commercial settings, you know, public-facing commercial settings, we, we have a policy that people, people need to wear masks. I do believe the rate of people wearing these will be higher than if we don't. And, um, and I think that that will make a difference in how this plays out in our community. So for those reasons, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of it. I'm hearing, um, that there's a majority of the commission that would like to, like to give that direction in terms of what we, where we go on this next. So I guess my question maybe to the county manager is, um, do we need to vote on that? We could, we could vote on that. If we're going to vote on that, we actually, we need to talk about the process for doing that, because this is a work session. But, but just, I guess just that's one question is, does staff feel like we have guidance? Or should we, should we just make sure this is really clear and, and take a vote on it?
This is a call for a work session. So by policy and practice, the board doesn't typically vote during such a work session. However, all board members are present. If the board wanted to vote on this, uh, we're right smack dab in the middle of emergency. You could adjourn the special meeting, call an emergency meeting now and vote on it.
Okay, so that's what we would need to do to stay within our policies and, and vote on it?
That would be the cleanest way, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
I think we should, I think it's one specific item that's locking us up. And I think we should, you know, and I, you know, I want to go to Commissioner Penland's, you know, comment. That, you know, it, it, in the, in my particular case, I think it should be left to the, to the businesses to make that decision, because they know their team members, they know their employees, they know their customers best. And, um, I think they'll be looking out for, for their best interest and balancing their ability to, uh, to earn that income and, uh, see if they're going to be able to keep that business going. And I think that they'll compassionately do that. I have a, I have a tremendous amount of confidence in the, uh, in the, uh, the, the community and those business owners. And I think it's been reflective in the town halls, how, how, uh, I mean, I'm just very, very proud of the, of the, of the people of Buncombe County. And, uh, and I believe they'll, I believe they'll do the right thing. I believe as we move into this, that they'll, they'll be respectful and, uh, and protective, and I think they'll do the right thing, so.
All right.
One of the things that I would like to make sure, however how this goes, is that we give guidance on the proper way of taking these masks off. Because I, wearing the mask, yes, but if something gets on the mask and you reach up there and you grab it with your hands, those are things that's going to have to be looked at to let the citizens know the proper way of taking these masks off is not just grabbing it with your hand and then not going and washing your hands. There's a, there is a proper procedure to take these things off, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, great. Uh, first, I want to thank everyone for what they're doing. And please, I don't want any, I know we all get up here sometimes and say things, but we never leave without telling each other, be safe, have a good weekend, how's the family? So I don't want anyone to think this is, this is our opinions is what we're doing on issues. But, uh, I'm okay if, if our county manager of us says, we all need to wear masks here, I am for it. I'm six foot eight, I've had emails, does Jasmine not like you or something because she's so far away from you? That has been said. So I am county manager and everyone, I will wear a mask if it says, if it makes everyone feel good. I mean, I will be more. I keep going back to this restaurant thing of being an owner. Our health department has the authority to say, they tell us to wear nets, they tell us what our temperature of our food is, they tell us everything. They should go ahead, if this is, seems like to be the biggest issue here, that everyone that is employed in the restaurant should wear a mask. We have to wear gloves, have to wear a hat, hair net, or something like that. So that one could be real easy. I still think the businesses should be able to say, we recommend you wearing a mask, or you have to wear a mask. I don't think we should go and tell that right there. I just don't think that we should, and that's where I'm at. And I'm so glad that we're going into phase two, because I've had so many people say stuff to me of lying with the governor. Commissioner Presley, if you don't go into phase two, if y'all don't go, why don't you get your staff, you commissioners, and stop your pay for ten weeks and fill our burden that we've got? And that's what I'm passing out here. We need to get this going. And I'll be more glad to stop my pay today if we're not going into phase two to let these things start. And I'll challenge everyone else, stop their pay. I don't think a lot of us can make it ten weeks like some of the other ones have. So that's where I'm at, and thank you, and.
All right, I appreciate every, I really sincerely appreciate everyone's feedback from the commission on this. So it's not, not, no easy decision here. What I'm going to suggest is that we adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to, uh, adjourn, uh, an emergency meeting, and we're going to follow up on this question on the, the mask policy, and so we can actually vote on it. Is that correct?
That sounds right, just have to call it and adjourn it, yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn the work session? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. I'd like to, uh, call, all, all commissioners are present, I'd like to call a special meeting of the Buncombe County Commission on May twenty-first. Four ten P M, an emergency meeting.
It's a special meeting to deal with an emergency, so it is an emergency meeting.
It's an emergency meeting.
All right. Thank you, Michael. And, uh, the topic is a discussion about the county's local policy going forward related to COVID nineteen response in phase two. And we just, we just had a discussion about it in a work session format, but there was one item we felt like the commission should vote on. So, um, that's the purpose of, uh, the emergency meeting. I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion for consideration. The motion would be to give direction, um, that the county would support having a policy that in commercial, public-facing commercial facilities, um, masks will be worn, um, in phase two of the, um, COVID nineteen, uh, response in Buncombe County. For, for, um, employees and customers who are in those public-facing commercial facilities, there needs to be language in our directive that talks about that this can be done where it's practical. When people are eating food, they're going to have to take a mask off. So this cannot be done, you know, every moment that you're in a facility. But where practical, that's the policy that we would like to have in place. It's not going to be a permanent policy. We'd like for this to go back to being a recommended policy, um, at some time in the near future, either when phase three starts or at, at an earlier time as recommended by staff. This is not a permanent, uh, policy of the county, but it's something that we want to maximize participation in wearing masks in commercial facilities as we are starting this new phase-two process in Buncombe County and in the, um, the state of North Carolina. This applies only to indoor settings, no outdoor settings. There would be no requirement for wearing masks in any outdoor settings or in people's personal residences. This is in, only applying to public-facing, uh, commercial facilities where employees and customers are having, uh, that kind of interaction in a public commercial setting. That's the motion.
Question.
Could I just make a quick point? Can we make the language, can we make the language face covering?
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you for that clarification, face, face covering.
Are you open to?
I'm open to.
We don't have a second, but are you open to some?
I'm open to some input on the motion itself, yes.
I wondered if we could just say, um, if we could include public facilities that may not be commercial in nature, for instance, a public library. So, so wordsmith it in such a way that it would encompass settings like that. And also make sure that we're providing very clear, um, guidance, I think, to address, and this might be at the messaging level, but the concerns Commissioner Edwards raised around, um, some of the specific concerns that folks of color might have around this. And then finally, I think it's important that we, um, just are very clear about enforcement. And the way this seems to play out in other communities is that this provides a way for, say, someone working at a grocery store to say to a customer, you need to put a mask on, you can't come in if you're, if you don't. But to be clear that people would not be arrested if they're not wearing a mask and to get clear on whether citations would be issued in instance, in any instances, um, related to this. My personal opinion would be that we should really not focus on, on the enforcement side of this. It should really be about just encouraging the behavior and creating a tool for staff in facilities to be able to encourage the use of masks. And, but that we should really shy away from anything that criminalizes, uh, behavior around this, unless it crosses some other criminal line.
I'm in a, I'm in agreement.
So does that mean encouraging or mandating?
No, I'm sorry, it, it would, that, that the intent of it, that it mandates it, but we don't criminalize someone not wearing it.
So I'm in agreement with the content that was just shared by Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrar. I'd like that to be part of the motion, um, including the, um, that in the county's policy, there will be language making it clear that individuals are not going to be prosecuted by law enforcement over this. But that we do feel strongly that businesses who take this order seriously and require everyone coming into their businesses, that we do strongly support them. And we will support those businesses in, uh, their decision to, to enforce this on their properties. The one other comment, or the one other detail I'd like to add is that, that the governor's order is going into effect tomorrow. We do need, I'm sorry, Friday, Friday at five o'clock.
Friday.
Friday at five o'clock. You know, that's, that's almost here. We need, we need to, people to have a little time to prepare for this. So I would like to ask for the staff to, um, make a recommendation on exactly when this piece of our local order would go into effect. I think we should give some additional time so it doesn't go into effect immediately, uh, on five o'clock on Friday. So people just have a time to, to plan, do some planning around this. All right, that's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, I'd, I'd respectfully request a, a roll call vote, uh, on, on this. The other thing I would ask, just for a point of discussion, is, um, so when we're, so are, are you acquiring, are you acquiring churches to wear masks?
No, this is in commercial facilities.
Commercial facilities.
Churches are commercial.
I'm glad to clarify, it's for commercial business facilities.
So, but, but you, you added libraries, what else are we going to, what else do you feel like is kind of along the same lines as a library?
I believe that the federal court ruling that came down last Saturday sort of made clear that,
Worship service.
That, that churches are exempt from any restrictions. The question I put to staff using their public health lens would be to think about what are the non-commercial public spaces people might be in under the new guidelines? And the only example I can think of right now is a library, I'm sure, I'm sure there are others. But, but the intent is just to keep people and employees, um, safe in those settings, so.
So, so it's a good question, and I, I think it's, on these matters, I think it's very important for us to be as clear as possible. And it's, it's, it's hard to contemplate every situation in society and the economy. But at this point, I believe the, the motion is for business, commercial facilities, public-facing. Libraries are specifically mentioned, but that's the, that's the limit of it. If the staff come up with other ideas they want to talk about, then we could talk about that, but that's not included in the motion at this time. Further discussion?
Yes. Ms. Farrar said about the, the legal aspect of it, but we also have to understand that a business owner can cite someone for trespassing if they don't come in wearing a mask, correct?
If a business owner, manager, or anyone in charge of those premises, they could make that a requirement, yes, sir.
Okay, so they could still, we get back to, they could still make this a requirement and, 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 okay. All right.
So. Yes, sir.
So I want this clear, because it's affected me. We're going to make every customer that comes into our business wear a mask.
To a restaurant, yes.
Okay, let's take into consideration here, but we're not going to take legal action against them, right?
No one's going to be arrested or fined by law enforcement. Again, you know, um, that's, we're expressing our intent. I'm not the sheriff of Buncombe County, but I think we're just as elected officials sharing, that, that's our, that's our view.
So I'm.
I will say, the places that are done around this, around the country, that's almost uniformly what we see, is that it's not a police enforcement, um, strategy in any way.
Police, I, I'm telling you what, I want you to understand, Asheville City and Buncombe County is different.
It is.
I, I am scared for my employees.
Absolutely.
That this big burly guy comes in and says he is not going to wear a mask in there, and I won't service. You're putting my employees in danger, and I'm a small one. I'm talking about all these, uh, I mean, I want a friendly amendment, please, make it mandatory for the businesses to have that, because, don't put my people in danger, please, please don't.
You're saying for the employees, but not the customers?
Employees, not customers, please. I do not, my daughter works there. Let me tell you.
I mean, I, I.
You got, I want y'all to think about this.
I mean, you got to think through this, you really do.
Really think about this, and we can change something. Let's see how this phase goes of making the employees do it first. And then we can look at it in a week or two. I tell you, you get out in Leicester, sandy mush, out in these rural areas, at these feeding seeds. I'm telling you, we're asking, the danger's not going to be arresting someone for not having it. It's going to be for someone getting something out of their car or someone coming in and taking retaliation. I am asking, let's think about this.
I, I, there, there are people who are going to strongly disagree with this. I don't have any question about that.
There, there's two hundred and sixty thousand people here, and I explain to my wife all the time, I'm not making everybody happy. There is half that's going to be upset with me, and there's going to be half that praises me for standing up.
I, 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 all I will say is I have put a lot of thought into that very situation that you're describing. And it, it, um, is probably the strongest argument against it, I'll acknowledge it. But, but what I also hear is that there are businesses who are very strongly intending to enforce this kind of policy, and many of them have said.
Let them do it.
Many, let me, let me finish.
Sorry.
Many of them have. Many of them have expressed to me that they believe they will be in a much better position to enforce this policy if it is the position of Buncombe County supporting it and requiring it versus it's, hey, my business has decided we don't like people like you. You know, that's kind of how they feel like they have to express it right now, it's just each business having to make this difficult, look at the difficulty we're having here, we're making every business go through that exact same process, and, and they feel like they will, they will be able to better protect their employees and their customers by having the county adopt this position. But I acknowledge it will, it, I acknowledge what you're saying, and I share the concern, I just, I think the, the other side of it is frankly outweighs it, so.
Mr. Chairman, please, can, may I ask, what is, what is the difference with a business owner who, who says that I will, I will make my employees do it, I will make my customers do it, but it's better if you make me do it? Knowing, knowing that we just said we wouldn't enforce it, but the business owner can enforce it through a trespass. I, I don't understand the business owner aspect telling us, we want you to make us do it, when they already have, they already have that.
Because they can tell people, this is, when people come in, they don't have a mask, they can say, hey, you need to wear a mask, it's a county rule.
They can do that now.
No, they don't, it's not a county rule, because right now, all the.
They can do that through the shoes and shirt thing, they can do that if, yeah.
They cannot say it's a county rule, it's not a county rule.
We also, I, I absolutely hear you, Commissioner Presley, it's, that part of it is very, very concerning. On the other, it's, I hear you, I hear you, it's very concerning, and we have more than a month, two months now of seeing what happens when people are not required to wear masks but strongly encouraged, which is that very few people wear masks. I mean, when you go out to Ingles, when you go around town, when you go around the county, you see very, very, very few masks, and I think.
Oh, I see a lot.
I, I, where I'm going, I see very few masks, and I think if, if, if strongly encouraging was working, then we'd see a significant number of people in our community wearing masks, and it's not, that tool is not working. This is not a tool or decision to take lightly, and at the same time, we know that when people don't wear masks, it significantly increases the risks.
Right.
To people on both sides of that interaction. So, that, that risk is present and ubiquitous, there's also many scenarios of businesses that might not pass this policy on their own, and the employees of those businesses that we have to think about. So, some businesses might be ready to opt into this tomorrow if, when they, when they reopen, but there's many that would not, and that creates, there would be environments there where employees would be at a higher level of risk because of that. So, to me, that's one of the arguments for the universality of this, and I've also wrestled with it, this is not something that I, um, thought we would need to use, but to me, right now, it feels like the right tool to put into the mix as we move into phase two.
And I mean, I, we've got a county employee that I eat with today, that told me that she'd been shopping at Ingles, and there was not enough people wearing masks, so she is shopping at Trader Joe's now. So, you know, see, people's got an option, she come up with an option that she felt comfortable in.
Some people have options, a lot of people don't have options.
Yes, we do, everyone has an option.
That's actually flatly false, many people in our community have really limited options. We could, that's a, it's not an unrelated topic, but.
It's not, but, I, I, all I want, we're going to vote, and boy, I sure hope something happened, but we talk about deaths, we could have fatalities, guys, of someone going, everybody's already mentally drained right now, don't shake your head, I mean, they are people ill right now. They're losing their life savings, they're losing their cards, their kids are going hungry. I mean, let's, let's give them the choice, I, I just, you know, I don't know if I'll stay open if I have to do that, because I'm not putting my employees in danger.
Yeah, and I, I want to respond, you know, I know, um, I know Commissioner Presley very well and his relationship with his family, and, and, and he is, I believe he is very serious in, in his statement, and that he is, would be concerned for his employee, team members, you know, one or more of which, you know, his family. And, um, you know, I think that we can move into, um, you know, the protection of these businesses without taking this big leap, I think we can, I think we can do that, we can look at it, you know, and, and, and measure, and, um, in the places that I have been, there is a lot of people wearing masks, there are some places that aren't wearing masks. But it, it just, and it depends on kind of, you know, are you in close proximity to, to, to people and customers, and, and, uh, but I don't know that, I'm just, I share his concern.
Let me share just one other thought on this, you know, so, um, the county adopts this policy, each jurisdiction in the county is going to have to decide if they want to do this, my expectation is that, some of them won't, may just be Asheville and Buncombe County, I don't know, we'll see. I believe Asheville will also, will also be on the same page, if the other jurisdictions decide not to do it, that is, each jurisdiction is going to have to make a decision on whether they want to opt into this or not, and I respect where any of them come down on it. So, I just wanted to share that, you know, this is not something that we're, we can't speak for everyone, we speak for certain parts of the community where we have sort of jurisdiction on this question, so, um, maybe that some others come down differently.
May I ask a question, please?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Frew, the, the shoes and shirt, no service ordinance rule, where does that come from? Can this be put into that same thing, and it's the business owner? I just think we're overstepping government, government is overstepping here. If we, if we could say to the business owner, that rule is in place under this ordinance, then we don't have to require anything, it could be up to the business owner.
That is an option, I would call it in common law, it's a control over the premises you own or manage under lease or, or just as a manager, same thing if you've, you've seen a kid skateboard out in front of grocery stores before, and the manager says, get off the property, so if they come back, it's a second degree trespass, so the same thing would apply. Any business owner can set conditions, reasonable conditions for people to enter, accepting medical or disability situations.
So, so this could be put to the business owner, and it's, and we, and we don't have to, we don't have to mandate it, it's up to be the business owner.
I agree, that is, that is one, that is one way of doing it, I just, I just, I just don't agree that that's the most effective way to do it, and for, that's, I mean, there's just a difference, I mean, I, I see the scenario, but, um.
But, Mr. Chairman, please, I'd, let's, 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 let's understand, we're going to be doing the same thing. If I put it into the, if I put it into Commissioner Presley's hands that says, hey, I'm going to wear, require this, and we put it into all the other business owners, it's, we're doing the same thing.
But only some businesses would do it.
But if, if they have to do the shoes and shirts, they have, they would have to do it if it's in that, that way. Would they, I mean, would they not have to follow that, that?
Commissioner, I'm, I'm not aware of a requirement in most settings that you'd have to have shoes and shirts to go into any business, I think it probably is required of restaurants per health codes, but not of other retail or other public places.
Okay, are there any, any other comments, because we've, we've been at it for a while, and it's been a good discussion, not an easy one, but a robust one. If there are no other comments, then, um, I'd like to ask all those in favor of the motion to.
I asked for a roll call.
Yeah, I'm just, look, everyone, everyone who's in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye, aye. Those opposed, raise your hand, say aye, no.
Aye, no.
Alright, I think it's clear how we voted, I just, we've never done that before, so.
Well, actually, if I, if I request that, you should honor that.
Okay, I'll think about it some more, just.
Pretty simple, it's just a roll call vote.
I didn't see the point of it, alright, um.
Mr. Frew, that, that is.
Yeah, just, on this point, is, if someone asks for a roll call under our policy, is that something we do? I've never, I've never, I've.
It's in the rules.
Sincerely, never, never, never come up.
You can call, you can call for a roll call vote.
What's the verdict, Mr. Frew?
I think that would be in the nature of a procedural motion.
Yeah.
I think it could be requested, I don't think it would take precedence over the main motion, and I think it'd be up to the chair to moderate.
Yeah, alright, thank you, I'll, I'll be happy to read over that stuff some more, too, and we'll, we'll look at it in the future. That was the only item that we talked about going into the emergency session for, so, is there a motion to adjourn the emergency session?
So move.
All in favor, yes, ma'am?
No, so we would work on that language and get it back out to you tomorrow. We'll also reach out to all the different municipalities to see how we align, and we'll have that ready for tomorrow, I believe, or, is that 3 o'clock? Or 2:30, 3? So, tomorrow at 3 o'clock, we'll have a media briefing, so we'll have this ready and circulated to you all, so that we can have that order signed tomorrow at 3.
Okay, thank you, alright, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, alright, we're adjourned.